Good morning. So, welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting, a regular meeting of November 25th, 2014. We started our meeting this morning at 8:00. We had no public comment at that point. We went into closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. In the initiation of litigation, we had two cases pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9. One case was pulled and was not discussed. The other case was discussed in regards to the rim fire in authorizing the county or asking if the county wanted to join in the efforts of, with Toomahmi County. Megan, I'm going to let you give a review of what the case is about, and then I'll report out the action, if you could please.
We've been working with CSAC for potentially joining as an amicus, in an amicus brief regarding the Center for Biological Diversity versus Skalaski and the Department of Forestry. The case is regarding a declaratory injunctive relief regarding whether, whether the Department of Forestry followed all the requirements under NIPA and the National Forest Management Act and the Administrative Procedure Act. We've been working with CSAC, and the question was whether the county wanted to participate in an amicus brief, which is essentially a front of the court. It's a brief, it would not be an action where we were a party to the case, but rather just providing support through briefing, and it provides the court additional information. Other jurisdictions have been involved in this, and so the question was whether the county wanted to participate as an amicus for the court in the amicus brief. This morning, on a vote of 4-0, the board authorized the county to join in the amicus brief prepared by CSAC to be filed in the Center for Biological Diversity versus Skalaski et al., which is pending in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals at this point.
Okay. Thank you for that. On item number two, we had conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation of one case pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.9. No action was taken on this item. Item number three, pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.9, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Roger R. Pito versus County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 1 for CB 40497, and no action was taken on this item. I do want to note on today's agenda, as we've transferred over from paper, you might say, to technology being on the internet and such, that the public comment item or section of the agenda was accidentally deleted, left off our current agenda being posted. So, we will have public comment section.
Did you forget about the exception rule?
Pardon?
Did you forget about the exception rule?
The exception rule?
When the public comment part is left off, that means we get to jump up any time we want.
Oh, I didn't know of that rule. So, sorry about that. So, we have the public comment section on the agenda, and it will follow the Pledge of Allegiance in the announcements. So, with that, I ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, announcements. All right, we'll go to the public comments. This is for any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas, may be addressed during this period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time, the board may immediately move to the consent agenda. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the regular agenda in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of the comments to be heard. So, at this time, we have a 30-minute public comment period. We have our first speaker.
Jumping right up and interrupting. Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. The IHSS Advisory Committee is one of, I believe, 38 commissions or committees or agencies that are set up to provide a link or advice to the Board of Supervisors. And if that's what I'm understanding, the advisory committees are for. And I've spent a year on an advisory committee, and I really made attempt to impact what I thought we were supposed to be doing, and I have been kind of disappointed. And so, I'm wondering about all the commissions and committees and how much energy we may or may not be putting into these, and if we're supposed to be giving advice to the committee, to the Board of Supervisors, how receptive that board would be to that advice, and what's the point of all of this? I mean, we're spending a lot of energy, is this just a way to meet people so we can go out and have a drink afterwards, or, you know, is it just a social interaction thing, or are we really trying to have an input into our local government, which is what I thought the advisory committees were all about? And inasmuch, too, it's also important for the advisory committees to feel like they do have an importance. How much energy do you all put into the advisory committees, and how much interaction and feedback is taken back from the advisory committees to the board? I know we haven't had a presentation in quite a long time, not yearly. Right now, we have a video, this is a documentary of the disability rights movement, and it's 54 minutes long, and it's more entertainment than a drudge because it's very heartfelt. And what I would like to do is offer you all to have a chance to preview it some afternoon, maybe after a meeting or at the end of a meeting. I know we only got two more meetings till the end of the year, but I don't know if I said it's 54 minutes long, so it's less than an hour, and it could be done during a lunch hour if we had a lunch, a bag lunch or something. But anyway, I'd like to offer to you, and especially to the new supervisors that will be appointed and maybe being volunteering for the various committees, this would be a way to understand what our committee's about. And Debbie, we know you have a background in this very area, and so we, you know, like to extend a special invitation to you to get involved or volunteer if you'd like for our committee, that would be very helpful. So, we want to thank Chris for participating, and it has not been fun because we've really been struggling this year. Eleven meetings, we didn't have a quorum for four of them. You know, we need involvement. So, and I'd like to say that on behalf of all the advisory boards in the county, that if we're struggling to make a difference, we all want to be received as such and reciprocated also. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any additional public comments?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Adam. I'm a field representative for Congressman Tom McClintock. I'm just here to listen today, and we do have field office hours from 9:30 to 11:30 down at the Water Agency in one of the meeting rooms. So, it's open to the public, open to you guys. If anything our office can ever sissy with, please feel free to reach out to us, we're always more than happy to help. I think that's it.
That would be CCWD Water Agency.
Yes, yeah. Thank you for your clarification.
Deborah Mullen from Public Works, Calaveras Transit.
Jeanne Hayward from the Resource Connection Food Bank.
And we'd like to talk to you this morning about the Stuff the Bus Campaign, Food Drive, with, which is a collaboration with Calaveras Transit and the Resource Connection Santa's Express Food Bank. And we've had three weekends of really successful food collection, and we want to appreciate, thank everybody that's contributed and volunteered, and it's been really good. And Jeanne, you want to talk about the take?
I do, but first, I want to say a special thank you to Marita for coming out in the rain on Saturday and joining our group, and Cliff for coming out on our very first one. From Stuff the Bus at the actual events, we've raised 159 turkeys that were donated, our goal is 300, and nine hams, and an addition we just didn't really anticipate was $1,742.52, which is really awesome, and we really appreciate that. We also collected 4,600 pounds of food, which is just incredible. So, I want to say thank you for those that have joined us. I would like to pass out some flyers to the board to let you know the other volunteer opportunities that we have at Santa's Express. The date is December 22nd, we anticipate serving about 1,000 families. So, 300 turkeys and hams is a good start, but I did want to tell you that other community members, people in our community have donated, and right now, we are at 250 turkeys with a goal of 300. So, over the next couple of weekends after the holiday, if we receive that, really nice to meet our goal. We're so happy to participate with Stuff the Bus with the Calaveras Transit, they have their big bus out at all of these events, it's just awesome. The staff has been great because they have volunteered their time as well, so I want to say a thank you to that. I would invite you all to come on day of distribution. If you can't be there for the entire day, just come and see us in action, it's actually an incredible event. We need all the volunteers that we can get right now to pack the food, to put out the toys, because there will be toys for children at 0 to 11 as well, and I do want to call out that we do need toys. So, brand-new unwrapped toys for ages 0 to 11. Thank you all, and I hope to see you at Christmas.
And also, there's the Stuff the Bus event, December 6th, that's a Saturday, it's at Angel's Food Market in Angels and Marvell in Valley Springs, and then the following Friday on December 12th, Marvell, Valley Springs again, and Save Mart in Angels Camp. Thank you.
Two things. You have me down for the December 6th and then Santa's Express, any word there?
As far-
Event last Saturday, Frog Town?
Oh, you want to talk about that? I would love to.
I think it's a great opportunity to share.
Thank you. Santa's Express Dinner Dance raised over $30,000 this year, which is just unbelievable. We got six, if you can imagine what a big, huge bin looks like, and if you were there, you saw them, six bins filled with brand-new toys. It was an amazing event, the community just really came out and supported the work that we do, and I'm grateful to Gina Galloway and Raylene, Raylene Diaz, for putting that on, taking that huge event on. They did it with seniors from Bret Hart High School, which was incredible, that's going to be their, part of their senior project this year, and was amazing, amazing event. So, thank you for letting me speak about that as well.
Great event, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to also thank on the Stuff the Bus, there was quite a few employees that came out to that and helped out, as well as, you know, some members of each, each community, and it was, it was actually a lot of fun. There's, and there was many teenagers from the school that came out, including, what's it, Calaveras Shooting?
The Shooting Club.
Shooting Club, yeah. So, the Calaveras Shooting Club was there as well, in nice bright yellow shirts and from very young ages, all up, and it was really a great event, and I think it's, and I want to thank all the stores and the markets that allowed us to invade their space, because it creates quite a bit of controversy, and, you know, these, the stores in our county are just amazing for allowing us to have these special events, so thank you.
Any additional public comments?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy Thanksgiving. I'm Al Segala, Taxpayer Association, and I have an item that is really over my head because I'm not an economist, not even an accountant. I contacted the best brains in the county, and they wouldn't even talk to me, and apparently the, there was an agreement with the G-20 to change the banking system in each of those countries, including ours. And the way it'd be changed is that if you have an account above the federally insured amount of quarter million dollars, that amount would be not treated as, not protected, and if, it'd be treated like a security, so that if the bank failed, that would be treated like other securities that would be liquidated, and you could get part of it back, you know, upon application. And this is being done to avoid bank bailouts, so what I, what I think needs to be done is not wait until there's a financial crisis, but look into this and ask our, our best brains we have to see what can be done to protect taxpayers' money. We don't know when this might occur, but it seems like if we can better secure the monies that we have over a quarter million dollars, so that if there is, or when the next financial crisis occurs, the taxpayers won't lose their money. So, it makes sense to look at it now and to ask our best brains to, to get as much information as possible and to make recommendations on changing our, our way. One possibility is a, what they have called banknotes. Apparently, banknotes cannot be treated like deposits, I'm not even sure about that. So, we thank you and urge you to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comments?
Something came to my attention, it's been a long time coming on it also, but how do you folks do code enforcement and the administrative fines you levy? What authority are you given, and by who, or whom, or what document? It's not in the Constitution. Constitution says due process. You are not authorized to give that due process. Now, while I was looking at that, I looked through and found Calaveras County Code Enforcement Officer, the definitions, example of duty, special requirements, all that good stuff. It talks in here about adherence, to effect adherence to other health and safety regulations, to effect abatements as appropriate to do what related work is required. Under examples of duty, it talks about works closely with county employees, law enforcement personnel, legal counsel, and representatives of the court, so as to handle citations and violations in an appropriate manner, and also that takes and investigates complaints, ensuring the applicable regulations are properly enforced, testifies in courts, and general hearings as required, and he has to have a knowledge of the legal system. This also goes for the senior officer also, same thing pretty much goes with it. So, how do you get, go about doing this without having to go to court? Now, my understanding that is a few years, quite a few years ago, accounts a board, three ladies, Galloway, Bailey, and Thine, put two fines on a gentleman, two, $45,000 fines. Well, he didn't accept that, he went to court. The judge ruled in his favor, not in the county's, and he chastised the county for it, he chastised the county council, who represented the county at the time. So, why are you doing this? Why, and it's also my understanding, years ago, the county used to go through the court system to make it legal. So, why is it bypassing the courts to get here for administrative fines and the other issues that are levied on people that come under code enforcement regulations? My understanding is these folks are supposed to be under peace officer status, which gives them the ability to do citations and the like. So, are we a law, a country of laws, or are we a country of what's going on now in this country? I don't even know what to call it. But I think it's time this county gets its act together and comes back into confines of the Constitution and the Constitution of the State of California, due process. If you can't do it, something should happen, and it already has, I think, for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments?
My name is Peter Race from General Inn. First of all, I'd like to thank all the people who ran for election, and I appreciate it. I'm sure everybody's got tired of it, it's not always a pleasant experience, but it's over and done with, and I want to thank every one of them, regardless if I agree with them or not, or support them or not. I'm glad changes were made, I'm looking forward to have those changes implemented. I'd like to make a comment for the future, number of activities that's supposed to be taking place in the future, and it seems to me that those activities, inspection, and seems that people are going to have to, or implied that they're going to have to prove themselves innocent of a compliance that they requesting. So, on that behalf, hopefully that we can get some folks down here to get them up to date, that they are innocent, that they've proven guilty, and they do not have to cooperate to make themselves look innocent. Somebody's going to have to come in, come in and show that they are guilty, and there's a certain rules, just because somebody shows up at your front door, you don't have to let them in. The same thing goes, there's someone come up to your gate, and they want to talk to you, you don't have to let them in. And I'm sure your legal experts will come to the point to realize that they were going to have to get, I believe it's administrative warrants, and that you're going to be able to say, stick at someplace where the sun don't shine, and the legal expert will have to, going to get pretty busy, and hopefully, we're going to educate those folks. You don't have to cooperate to prove yourself innocent. Somebody's going to have to send pretty damn good basis to show that they have a reason to be assumed guilty, and the burden of proof will be on any county, state, or federal agency, what basis they presume that you're guilty. So, some attorney's going to get very rich on it, or county's going to get very poor on it. But I'm looking forward to next year, it's going to be very interesting, and to some of the folks behind me, if you look at the newspapers and look at the TVs, there's one good reason not to have high-density, low-income, Section 8 houses in your neighborhood. Thank you.
Any additional public comments?
Good morning. My name is Dave Vacarez, I'm with Cal Waste. I'm at 1149 Dunbar Road in Arnold, California, and I just, today, I just wanted to come and tell you a little bit about, we've rolled out a brand-new website at www.calwaste.com, and on that, on that website, we've got every area in the county with information for, everywhere from West Point to Arnold, all the way out to Copper, all the communities have, you know, some information pieces to tell them what kind of services we offer and what collection days are, there's collection calendars in there. So, it's a real informative piece, and on that, on that website, we're currently doing a survey of all of our customers, and specifically in the Calaveras area, we're surveying our customers to find out what kinds of services they're interested in, kind of rate our services, just get some feedback to us to, to find out how we're doing in the county and what kind of programs that we can offer. So, I encourage you to all go to that website at cal-waste.com and take the survey, and we'll be able to bring that back to the board and, and tell you what the results are, and maybe be able to customize our service in the future to what the needs of the community are. So, I encourage people to do that. And I'm going to ask Mary Beth to come up real quick and, and just to give a little recap on some education things that are going on.
Did you say Cal Waste or Cal dot Waste?
No, cal-waste.com.
Also active on Facebook.
Yes, and you can also see it on Facebook, and Mary Beth will tell you how to get there because I'm not sure how, so.
Good morning, Mary Beth, Hospital Community Outreach Coordinator for Cal Waste. When I was here last time, I shared with you guys a little bit of my outreach in the schools. We recently had Michelson Elementary, we sponsored a bus for them to come down and visit our facility in Galt, our material recovery facility, and the students wrote this great article in their paper, and I thought I would share that with you quickly. This is my first Trojan Times story, and I'm writing about the 5th grade Cal Waste Recycling Center field trip to Galt. There were some very interesting things at Cal Waste. The first thing we did is go on the big truck scale, all together, we weighed over 3,240 pounds. The next thing we did was go and see all the different types of trucks, the trucks were huge. We also got to see the maintenance guys work on them. Next, we went into the main office. We had to be so quiet because they have to take so many calls, they receive one to nine calls a minute. There are different colors for the waste and recycle bins, the colors are blue for recyclables, brown for garden and outside things, and trash is black. There were some amazing and exciting things about the trip. We went into the education room and saw the magic curtain, when they opened it up, we could see the entire recycle center's working area. There was a conveyor belt where about 10 people began sorting out the non-recyclable trash. The rest of the material continued on the belt and was then sorted by more people, depending on if it was paper, glass, et cetera. Altogether, there was over 70 people working on the assembly line. When they see a needle or other hazardous items, they have to turn off the power in the building, and everybody has to stop until they find the item. They find at least one to two needles a day. They could get very sick if they touch the needles because they may have diabetes juice on them. The workers do wear safety gear like gloves and goggles to protect them. The employees find very weird things sometimes. There was one time a few months ago when they found a live kitten in a cardboard box, it was quite amazing. They decided to name the kitten Lucky because it was so lucky that someone heard it before it went up the conveyor belt. We played a game called Sort the Trash. Four people would go up in front of the other kids, they would have 30 seconds to sort the trash and recyclables out. It was interesting to see what recyclables, what was recyclable and what was not. Once all the recyclable stuff is all sorted and bundled, it is shipped out from the port overseas. It costs a lot of money to ship it. If China thinks it is not useful material or dirty, they have to send it back. Cal Waste has to pay for the shipping, so they make sure that everything is clean and will be accepted. If they receive aluminum cans, they have to give money back to the people that send them. Then, our guide, Mary Beth, showed us the waste pizza. The pizza was divided into three parts, one was recycling, one was trash, and one was outdoor things. Recycling was the smallest and trash was the biggest. The goal is to have 75% of the pizza represent recycle by December, or our pizza will be gone. We will try- We will try as hard as we can to make this happen. After we were done looking at the magic curtain and the other activities, Mary Beth invited us over to a basket where we got candy and a golden recycle bin. That was the field trip of Cal Waste. We all had a great time, and I hope we can go there again. Written by Haley Moranix. So anyways, it was funny. This little girl showed up. She had a camera around her neck. She looked like quite the little journalist. And she took all these great notes. Some of these, you know, the goal is to have seventy-five percent of the pizza by December. Well, it's actually by twenty-twenty, but, you know, the kids really had a great time. We enjoyed them being there. I encourage you guys to come down and check out our facility if you haven't been there. It really shows, you know, when, when the recycling goes into the cart and it's pushed out to the curb, I don't really think people understand what happens after that. So, it shows the whole process of what happens after the recycling is picked up by Cal Waste. So, anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments?
Excuse me. Could you tell us when you're gonna be on pay?
What's that?
Pay.
On the cable TV? December tenth. We are actually going to be on the public cable access TV, December tenth is our first debut. Dave and I will be on there. We will be on it for three months, once every month, December, January seventh, I believe. And we haven't set the February date yet, so watch for us. Thanks.
Okay, public comments?
Good morning. My name is George Frye. I'd like to make a couple of comments. As you well know, you pointed me to the IHSS. And I've been on there, I guess, about seven months. And I, I used to go to the meetings prior to that. I liked the way the process has been streamlined in terms of people being able to apply. After I got on the, the committee, I had the opportunity to meet with Mary Zawicki. And I asked for an overview of what the process is about and where the funding is and so on and so forth. And she was very good about giving me the information. And I also found out that she's really quite a baseball aficionado. And we had a great talk about that because I love baseball. And, and then we talked about the living room. And I had made a suggestion to her that we bring the living room back into behavioral health and let behavioral health run the living room. And I was pleased to hear, and I'm certainly not suggesting that it was my idea. I'm just happy that it's happening. And I've, I've since heard that the living room is gonna be run by behavioral health. And I think that's really a real plus. And where we, where the county can oversee it and, and make sure that it's running smoothly. So, I just wanted to share that information with the board, unless you already knew. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we're going to move on to the consent part of our agenda. On the consent, we have consent items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Are there any items the board wishes to remove from consent? I'd like to remove item number five. Is there any staff members that would like to remove an item from the agenda? Is there any public who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Item eleven. Any other items? Pardon?
Number six.
Number six. And number twelve. Yes?
Thirteen, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Twenty-three and twenty-four. Did he, did you hear that, Peter? Twenty-three and twenty-four are on the regular? All right, so I have items number five, six, eleven, twelve, and thirteen pulled from consent. I'll entertain a motion on the balance of consent.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion made by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Edson, to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries four oh with one Supervisor Spellman absent. Okay, item number five, it's with the sheriff. Authorizing the sheriff to enter in a contract with the Thirty-Ninth District Agricultural Association for three thousand three seventy-five for the provision of law enforcement services at the county fairgrounds for May fourteenth, two thousand fourteen to May seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. So, number one, I'm hoping that it's two thousand fifteen, not fourteen.
Where are you referring to?
On the consent. We have the dates of May fourteenth, two thousand fourteen to May seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. So, I'm hoping this is for next year's fair, not last year's?
It is.
Okay.
I think the correct date's under the discussion and summary. It was listed as two thousand fourteen under the recommendation, but under the summary, it's two thousand fifteen.
Okay. And then, last year, when we discussed this item, it was kind of a last-minute item brought to the board, and there was some discussion about the cost associated. And it looks like it mirrors last year's contract. So, I'm just wondering if there was any discussion with the fairgrounds or any thought given to this? If this is the full cost, are we, are we subsidizing this contract in some way? Just some background information there.
You are correct. It's the same amount. During the discussions with them, that is the amount that they have offered because of the fair's financial situation. We schedule, as I mentioned this last year, we schedule the deputies that are working the fair to the amount that is owed. We do have some deputy sheriffs that owe hours due to our schedule. And if they still owe hours at that point in time in the year, they're brought in to work, to work the fair. We also try and utilize reserves. We don't exceed the cost unless we receive some sort of intelligence prior to the fair that there could be a potential problem, then we obviously have the right and need to staff up for that. If you recall, a few years ago, when there was an accident at the fair, obviously, we had to bring in additional resources that year. So, we don't know exactly what's going to go on during the fair weekend until right up to and before the fair weekend. So, we, we generally speaking, staff accordingly. The last few years, the fair's been very quiet, and we have staffed down considerably from, from previous years.
So, this amount here is what the fair tells us they can pay. Is that correct?
Correct. The only exception to that is there's, there's some separate negotiations that go on with our reserves, and I'm not part of those.
So, above and beyond, like?
It could be, if the reserves are available to work the fair, and if they choose to work the fair, and they have some discussions with, with fair management.
Are they paid directly?
They have been in the past, yes.
From the fairgrounds?
Yes, they have been in the past.
But aren't the reserves under your jurisdiction?
They are, but this was a separate contract from years past where they, they negotiated by themselves with the, with the fair. And more, more recently, a lot of the reserves are not available to work. We're down to very few reserves, and they're, they're generally speaking, not available to work. The ones that do, we utilize them to transport inmates back and forth.
Okay, I, I guess I struggle with this because I'm, I'm just, you know, feeling from the fair, it's like there's a county contribution to this in some way. And I'm trying to kind of figure out what is the fair paying and what, you know, we're, we're giving back to the fair in some way. And there must be some dollar amount associated to that with officers above and beyond this amount.
Okay, so let me back up and explain what happens. I give the sergeant that is responsible for scheduling the fair, the amount that's on the contract. He meets with the budget analyst in the sheriff's office, determines who's going to be working what overtime and what those costs are going to be, who's going to be working regular time and what those costs are gonna be. And they schedule according to the amount for the weekend.
Okay, so these officers are at the fairgrounds?
Yes. Am I missing something here?
No, I just find that if this is amount of the fair, the fair is telling us this is what they can afford. And I'm just wondering, we're going out there saying this is what is necessary for the fair from a public law enforcement point of view. This is what we feel staffing is necessary for the fair with this amount of people and this sort of thing. So, I, I just find negotiations a little backwards if the fair is saying, here's three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars to cover a four-day event with forty thousand people attending the fair.
Sure.
So, I'm just trying to find, you know, typically, law enforcement, as we have other groups come to us, says it's gonna cost, you know, five thousand dollars for us to cover this event, and the event says yea or nay.
Sure.
I'm, I'm just trying to find out, I, I'm sure in some capacity, the county is giving to the fair in some way. Just trying to find out what that number may be.
Okay, I, as far as, as far as years past, the county absorbed a lot of costs associated with the fair when there used to be more arrests, more, more cases. The fair has been relatively quiet recently. We do still staff it. But I, I don't thi, if, if the question is, are we contributing a bunch of money to the fair? No. Do we have to staff up for other events surrounding the fair and the fair weekend outside of the fairgrounds? That is correct. But if we receive last-minute information that a group or two groups are having problems and may show up at the fair, we need to have the flexibility to, to bring staff in. Quite conversely, if we have a bigger problem, say in Murphy's or Copperopolis, we actually will pull people from the fair and send them down there. So, it just depends on what's going on, on the particular weekend and even the particular day throughout the weekend.
Okay. Because I do find Murphy's probably needs law enforcement more than the fair in the last couple of years.
Yeah, it just depends on the given moment.
Okay.
Obviously, a big fight breaks out at a bar at the fairgrounds, then we would obviously need folks there. Conversely, if it happened in Murphy's or Copperopolis, we would send staff down there.
So, at the fair, are we, do we say that we're gonna have so many officers at the fair during the fair?
Yes.
So, we make that commitment?
Yeah, it's, well, as far as a commitment goes, we have a schedule that's built, and it's, it's staffed accordingly like we do with almost every other special, special event.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, public comments on this item? Okay, entertain a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion made Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Edson, to authorize the sheriff to enter in a contract with the Thirty-Ninth District Agricultural Association for three thousand three seventy-five for the provision of law enforcement services at the county fairgrounds for May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen to May seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries four oh with one absent. Yeah, item number five, human services authorize the auditor, oh, excuse me, item number six. Human services authorize the auditor controller to release by warrant to the Resource Connection Presley Funds and Domestic Violence Education and Training Fund probation slash court collections collected July one, two thousand thirteen through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, supporting the domestic violence shelter-based program in Calaveras County in the amount of five thousand seven hundred five dollars thirty-eight cents. A question?
My question. I know the Presley funds are marriage license fees. There's a, an attached fee on marriage license fees. And I was wondering what the total of a marriage license fee is now and how much the, the funds are, because they started at like seven dollars on each marriage license. And I know they're probably up over fifty. So, I was wondering if there was any other monies in the Education and Training Fund probation collections besides the Presley funds? And how many marriage licenses is issued in Calaveras County each year? Because these are only Calaveras County marriage licenses that are taken out in our local court. Doesn't represent marriages that take place here. So, that, that would just be interesting if marriage licenses are like a hundred bucks and fifty dollars of that goes to the domestic violence fee. I'm still wondering how many, you know, it's just interesting. At first, there was only like seventy marriage licenses a year in Calaveras County. I'm just wondering what we're up to now. I wonder how many divorces too, but that's something else.
Okay. Is this something, Mary, can you?
The recorder.
I, I know that marriage licenses, right now, the fee for that is sixty dollars and sixty-five dollars for a confidential marriage license. However, I'm not sure what the number of, to date, that have been issued.
And, and we could work with the clerk reporter's office to find out what that number is. A, a lot of their fees that they collect are, are split seven different ways till Sunday. So, marriage license especially has just kind of a dedicated stream of revenue that kind of goes across the board. So, we can find that information out.
I think, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's approximately a hundred, but I'm, I'm just not sure that that is a, a this year figure.
All right. So, Bonnie, Rebecca, can you coordinate with Bonnie to get back to her on that information?
Yeah.
So, basically, it's the number of licenses and what's been charged? Okay. Okay, no further comment on item number six. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by, by Supervisor Edson, second by Supervisor Wright, to authorize the auditor controller to release by warrant to the Resource Connection Presley Funds and Domestic Violence Education and Training Fund probation slash court collections collected July one, two thousand thirteen through July, excuse me, June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, supporting the domestic violence shelter-based program in Calaveras County in the amount of five thousand seven hundred five dollars thirty-eight cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries four oh with one absent. Item number eleven, Public Works adopting a resolution to amend the Department of Public Works Title VI program and adopt a language assistance plan in compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. And the question on this item?
Joe Kelly, I'm trying to understand the provisions to ensure that limited English proficient LEP individuals be provided meaningful access to federally funded transportation programs. I use their own words, or the words that are in the document. The purpose of this is full participation of all citizens in the Calaveras Transit Service area, including but not limited low-income minority individuals and those with limited English proficiency or LEP. Talks about environmental justice, part of the mission by identifying and addressing the efforts of all programs, policies, and activities on minority populations and low-income populations. Now, my concern is, is that the, the writings in this document, and part of it anyway, is primarily English and then did have some translation to Spanish. And I'm wondering, what happens to the rest of the people? There's ten other Spanish, or, I'm sorry, ten other than Spanish LEP nationalities that are in this county. And as we see in state documents, they put everybody's writings in there. This one only has Spanish. I'm wondering why? We certainly don't want to discriminate against the others. So, that's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Deborah, are you able to respond?
I can. The, the Spanish-speaking population is the largest of the non-English. We have a few people that speak other languages. The law requires us to take reasonable steps. We don't have to have bus drivers available to speak all languages. What they do have to have are tools to identify people that may need help in other languages, and there are resources that can be found. There are translation networks and... There are translation networks, and this just gives us some broad working tools to help people have access to transit.
Does that answer the question here? I'm sorry, does that answer the question? Mr. Kelly?
I'm sorry, I was reading something else in here, instead of paying folks' attention. Did she answer the question, why the 10 other nationalities are being left out? Fine, if she didn't, then the 10 other nationalities are left out. There is answer the question, why?
Okay. I think it's all encompassed. Is that correct, Deborah? Yes. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on number 11.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Supervisor Edson, second by Supervisor Wright, to adopt a resolution to amend the Department of Public Works Title VI program and adopt a language assistance plan in compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0 with one absent. Number 12, Public Works authorize interim director of Public Works to execute a transit facilities license agreement between the County of Calaveras and La Contenta Plaza for the installation and use of a transit bus shelter and a bus stop in the La Contenta Plaza parking lot. And Supervisor Edson, did you pull this item?
Yes, I just pulled it mainly for informational purposes, because I know that we have approved bus shelters that are going in in San Andreas and also Murphy's, I believe, right? And so just wanted to make sure that folks know that we haven't abandoned the one in Valley Springs, and it's being worked on. Do you have any type of estimated time that that's gonna take place?
We hope to, the shelter at the La Contenta Plaza, we're going to do with public works staff, our road crew, like they constructed the one on Blagan Road in front of the library there. So it's not part of, it is part of the Phase III bus stop improvement project like the others you mentioned, but it's not part of that bid package. So Yana, the property owner, is gracious enough to allow that. He's giving up a few parking spaces to allow the shelter to be constructed.
Any other comments on item number 12? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Supervisor Edson, second by Supervisor Wright, to authorize interim director of Public Works to execute a transit facilities license agreement between the County of Calaveras and La Contenta Plaza for the installation and use of a transit bus shelter and a bus stop in the La Contenta Plaza parking lot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0 with one absent. Item number 13, Public Works approve an increase of $200,000 to the blanket purchase order for the purchase of asphalt and/or other road materials from George Reed, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $550,000 in fiscal year 2014-15. And we have a question on this item?
Yes, I do. My impression, what I was reading about, they exceeded the amount that they planned on, is was $81,000. Does anybody on your staff, board, the CEO, anybody does approve some kind of overruns before they get overruns? That's one thing. And they want to expand that to, for $200,000. Is there such a thing as live within your means and know what the hell you're doing? I mean, you're talking about a pretty good chunk of money. That's one thing. And I still, I don't know if you folks get it, but where is the money actually spent? You find out about it later on. But when you give them a blanket, hey, have a half a million dollars or a million dollars to spend, that's the kind of, you would not do it in a private sector, private business. You have a contract with somebody, you expect them to know what the hell they're doing. And I know it's only $81,000, it's Mickey Mouse, but it's taxpayers' Mickey Mouse. And they want another $200,000 for nothing specific. But either they know what the hell's going on, or get somebody who does. You're talking about a lot of money here. $81,000 overrun, that they got the CEO's approval to overrun $81,000? Do we have that much slosh cash going around? Does the board has $200,000 additional money? I think we're in a pretty tight budget. Somebody's gonna have to be held responsible for it. Either you know what the hell you're doing, or hit the road. That's being blunt. I mean, I ran business, you folks run a business. Now you're running public's business. So anyway, I bring it to your attention that somebody's gotta be held responsible for it. And as a, you know, one of those poor people who just get, just all they can do is elect or make sure that doesn't get elected. My own recourse is to you folks. But think about it, if it was your own private business coming out of your pocket, would you put up with this kind of BS? Thank you.
Thank you. Robert or Scott is here? Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Road Superintendent Scott Anderson. I'm the one in charge. I'm the one that made the call on the excess paving on the project on Crystal and Fairway Drive. We were doing routine maintenance up there, doing some digouts and some structural digouts. And we got into a situation where the roadway that we were working on, not exactly working on, but the roadways that were joined to the roads that we're working on and traveling on were just decaying to the point to where I had felt that it was in our best interest to cover these areas with a thin lay overlay, to save us some emergency services calls down the road. So that's where that is.
Thank you.
The additional, the additional money, the $81,000 was the overrun price that we did, we did two and three tenths of a mile on Fairway as well as Crystal Drive. The other portions of the money is to get us through next spring. The prep work that we did this last summer, we planned to pave next spring within the fiscal year, and it'll just give us the means and ways to do such.
Thank you. Are you finding weather to be on your side?
Weather's good, yeah. We've had an extended summer for the last two years, so we've been able to get a lot of work done. I feel that, you know, we, when we budget, we go on a three-year type of average. And this year, we underbudgeted, and I think hopefully, we'll have a winner this year, and we'll be right back on track in the next couple of seasons.
So Scott, how does that work with the $81,000? That was an $81,000 overrun authorization that you gave for the go-ahead?
How does it?
I mean, you have the authorization?
Yes, yes, I do.
To what level do you have that authorization?
Well.
At what monetary level?
To what monetary? We have budgeted, we have budgeted more funds in the 5411 Fund. This just happened to be the blanket purchase order that we'd averaged through the past couple of years.
But I mean, if so, they say, well, it's gonna cost, you know, we're gonna have to do all this extra work.
Right.
At what point do you need to get higher-level authority for that?
Well, I'd have to go, I'd have to run it through Robert, of course.
At which point does that happen?
We have to come back to the board right away. That's, we have a, the CAO has a $50,000 limit. Anything above that $50,000 has to come back to the board.
The $81,000, who, how is that approved? Just by Scott?
Just by me.
How does that work?
He ordered the material, and we had to come back to the board right away. Right during the time that they were in construction, he ordered the material to come. But that already exceeded the authority. We had to come right back to the board.
So this is, you give the initial order for the material?
Right.
But then you come back to the CAO for approval?
If the expenditure exceeds $50,000 in the year, it requires board approval. It was initial purchase order that was issued for road materials, and this is ongoing road maintenance. And I can't presume to, not being a road worker, determine what needs to be done.
Sure.
It is up to the road, Department of Road Supervisor and the Public Works Director to determine whether the scope of the work needs to be expanded or what have you. In this case, it was determined that for whatever reasons that was necessary in to order those additional materials, it exceeded the existing PO. However, even with this blanket PO to cover that, they are still within the budget for the materials to do road maintenance.
So as long as you're within, I'm trying to answer Peter's question here for you. The, as long as you're under the budget, overall budget for road maintenance, then you can go ahead and feel comfortable ordering that because you're still underneath the budget.
Yeah, the 5411 line item, yes.
Yeah, and so that's where, that's, I think, what, you know, people aren't realizing. It's not like you're adding this additional cost.
No.
Overall, it's just within the, in the larger budget.
Right.
One clarification. I think where some confusion gets in administration in my office, see this quite frequently, is a, not a clear differentiation in operational thought process with regards to budget and purchasing authority. The board approves the budget, and yes, we have budget that could clearly be beyond, you know, you could have a million dollars budgeted for maintenance. Purchasing authority is altogether different, and purchasing authority is much more restrictive. And that's where we tend to see kind of these overruns occur. Technically, no one has the authority to make any orders or any expenditure in excess of their purchasing authority. So under the road commissioner, there are higher-level purchasing authority requirements that we are gonna be working on with, on the purchasing policy to ensure that those additional allowances that are available under the road commissioner, and then we also are, we fall under a alternative purchasing practice countywide. So we're gonna be looking at that. But there really is no authority. The fact that you might have budget for a half million dollars, that doesn't really matter, because the blanket purchase order was 200,000, I think that is what it was. So the moment you hit 200,000, that's really it. However, if there is an emergency-type situation, then it has to be deemed an emergency, which the only person that I'm aware of that can actually deem an emergency is Ms. Ryan, then that would be the communication there, and then I think you have within 14 days from that occurrence to get it to the board of supervisors. So we kind of are on a tight, tight frame, timeframe, but there's really limited authority. So I think there's always, there's always a misunderstanding on, well, I had budget for it, but budget is different than purchasing authority. So we're trying to get that purchasing policy up to date, so there's a little bit more clarification and get some training out there for departments.
And Ms. Callen is correct, there are provisions in the purchasing policy for those emergency purchases, and that is why we're returning to the board within the timeframe, so that you can, then the board can confirm that purchase.
So that means every time there's a road project, they're gonna have to come, because they have?
No, if they exceed the blanket, the blanket purchase that we've already done.
And that's why they're back requesting a blanket purchase order, which is up to the line item for the road materials that they need to do road maintenance through the remainder of the year.
The auditor got on us for last year, which is why there's a blanket work order. So I mean, Scott doesn't have to come and get permission every time he spends 50,000 as long as he stays under the 200 or 500 or whatever.
Right, the blanket purchase, blanket purchase order.
And we grill him like this every time he comes here, that way he stays underneath.
Not me, I want my roads done, I won't grill him.
Okay, are there any further comments or questions on this item?
Can I, it's something from a simple modification?
You can approach the?
Okay, I can approach you more.
No, approach the podium so we can all hear the question.
Just so I understand it, please, keep my ear, because I'm kinda mentally challenged. The 200,000 is still within the budget. It's just a question of the, stretching the limit, what they can spend on that particular thing. If it were 50,000, that's cool. But because they passed a 50,000 additional one, it's still in the budget.
No, I don't think you got it. We'll clarify.
They have all the pieces, just not put together in the right way.
Okay, 81,000, that's cool, but it's a couple of dollars over the 50,000.
The money spent thus far is still within the budget.
200,000 also. Thank you.
The money being?
You have the money for it, right?
Yes, we do.
If not, we'll call you, Peter.
It's all within, all within the budget. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion made by Supervisor Callaway, second by Supervisor Wright, to approve an increase of $200,000 to the blanket purchase order for the purchase of asphalt and/or other road materials from George Reed, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $550,000 in the fiscal year 2014-15. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0 with one absent.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Go pay some more roads.
Yeah, D2.
Within budget. Okay, that concludes our consent agenda. We'll move on to our regular agenda. An item number on the regular agenda. See, the verbiage is missing on the regular agenda. So we're gonna start with item number 22. We'll have three minutes per person on public comment on items on the public regular agenda. Another technical.
No, I'm sorry, that language several months ago was moved to the very first beginning of the agenda.
Okay.
Before the 8:00 AM call to order.
Okay. We got it. Okay, item number 22, we have first five Calaveras introduced after waiver of the reading requirements, amendments to ordinance number 2878, correcting the reference numbers for the health and safety code sections, rescinding section four, membership, and making two additional minor changes. Mary, I'll ask you to introduce this item.
Yes, good morning. This is actually a pretty quick summary. Basically, what we're making some corrections to both the ordinance and the reference numbers to the health and safety code, basically concerning the membership and doing some updates to first five, clarifying its role both within the county government and also the membership itself in the bylaws, and that it's part of the Children's and Family Service Commission. And I have to give a lot of credit to Terry Lane, who actually, for the first time, put, because it's both first five and they have some additional duties, did it in such a nice way that it actually explains the role within the county government. We're asking permission to publish a summary of the amendment and for all of you to hear this at a future date on December 9, on the consent calendar.
Okay, so this particular item is introducing these changes.
Yeah, it's just a cleanup item on membership and language. On ordinance and bylaws. Really fascinating reading.
Okay.
I'll make a motion approve after the public comments is finished.
There any public comments on this item? Okay, I have a motion made by Supervisor Wright. Is there a second to this item? Second by Supervisor Edson, to introduce after the waiver of the reading requirements, amendments to ordinance 2878, correcting the reference numbers of the health and safety code sections, rescinding section four, membership, and making two additional minor changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0 with one absent.
Chair Ponte?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, I heard Ms. Uwicky ask for authority to publish a summary, so I just wanted to make sure that that was included, if that's the board's desire.
That was included in Supervisor Wright's?
Yes, very quiet motion. Yes, very quiet motion.
Okay, so we're, Diane has that information. Item number 23, Planning, Planning Department submitting a draft letter to FEMA for the board of supervisors' approval and signature. Peter, would you introduce this item to us?
Good morning, Peter Mauer, Planning Director. About a month ago, we received direction from your board to draft a letter for your signature due to our frustration with the lack of any movement from FEMA. I don't think I need to go into a long history of why we're in this position, but we were given some assurances from FEMA several years ago that adopting certain maps would assist county residents. The result has been nothing more than a disaster. Thousands of new residents are now subject to FEMA flood insurance that really they shouldn't be, and our attempt to get FEMA to cooperate with us and correct those erroneous maps have been fruitless thus far. So there is a draft letter attached to the staff report for your signature, and hopefully we've captured the essence of what you would like to say. The intent of this letter is to send it up, maybe higher in the chain of command in FEMA and also to Congressman McClintock's attention, that we're very frustrated with the agency and that something needs to happen. And I'm glad to hear that Adam is here from his office, so that you can maybe hear some of the frustration today, as I'm sure there's a number of people in the audience who want to speak to this issue. Just an update, we received an email from Juliette Hayes the other day. She is the Risk Analysis Branch Chief from FEMA, and is setting up a meeting scheduled for December 10th with planning staff and some of their staff, a number of people. This was a result, as a result, from an email that I sent off to, to FEMA in response to a proposal that we accept certain minor changes, and I, my response was essentially, this is unacceptable. You know, you're not listening to us, you're not doing what we're asking you to do. And so this new person, Juliette Hayes, has now responded, set up a meeting. So I'm hopeful that maybe some movement will occur, but I think we need to keep the pressure on at all fronts. And so I'll report back to you after this meeting to let you know what's happened as a result of that. So the only change that I would recommend to the letter would be to add this Ms. Hayes to the list of CCs. Do you have any questions?
No, that's, I was going to suggest that too, because I don't see her name in any of this correspondence we have, so.
She was new to the list of people.
Into the, into the list. Okay, I think we have public comments on this item, so does the board have any items of Peter on this letter? So today we're looking at this letter and giving you approval to.
If you agree with the content of the letter, then I'll work with Diane, have it sent out.
Okay.
Under your signature.
Okay, no board comments on this item?
I do.
Supervisor Edson?
So before, the previous board accepted this, you mean the previous board made the change?
Yeah.
Or recommended the change? What was, what was being used for? Was there anything in place at all?
There was the, the flood insurance rate maps, the firm, and it was based on some prior mapping that FEMA had, had done, and I'm not sure what the date of that was. And they were updating those in 2008, 9, 10, and at the same time, the state had prepared this flood awareness mapping program, which was intended to be more general, more sort of a general plan level mapping, that here are our stream areas that have the potential for flooding. And so as you update your general plan, you should look at these zones to, to make sure that there's generalized policies addressing flood hazard. We are the only county in California that have accepted these maps as a part of the FEMA program countywide. CR County accepted those for a small portion of their county, but no other county accepted these. And, you know, at the time, from what I can read from the record, when I, you know, hear from people that were involved in it, it was that we were assured this would assist property owners in getting insurance if they needed it. Instead, it's been sort of twisted on its head, and it said now they're required to get insurance, even though they're really at a very broad scale. They're upwards of 40 feet off, they're offset, so they don't really line up correctly with the streams. They were just supposed to be more of a general awareness mapping, that's the title of the flood awareness mapping program. So to utilize these relatively inaccurate maps for the purpose of requiring flood insurance is just simply inappropriate, and that's the message we were trying to get to FEMA, is that you've got more accurate data, let's use the accurate data rather than these inaccurate maps. And I just, it's, it's, one of the most frustrating things I've been involved in is why can't we just fix them? We know there, we know what, what needs to be done, it's just the federal bureaucracy makes, you know, everything else look like a model of efficiency, so.
So have you seen the more accurate data?
Yes, we have.
And, yeah, how much would it reduce?
I think it drops significantly. I don't know the numbers, but several thousand people will be out of the flood zone. It reduces the swaths on the map by a large degree. You know, it varies from stream to stream, but it's, it accurately reflects the mapping as we have today. And why we can't simply have FEMA go through whatever process they went through to adopt these maps, to un-adopt them and adopt the more accurate data, is just incomprehensible to me. So hopefully, this letter and our continued work with them will get some movement going on.
I'll wait for the public.
Okay, any public comments on this item in regards to this letter being suggested? We have, I see this gentleman here, and then.
I'm Dave Silvera from Burson, and I'm on that crazy map that I live in a box canyon. I live on the west side, No Name Creek is on the east side, and the east side is all flat. And the creek starts a mile and a half from my place. And it only runs about 10 miles out of the county. There's no gain between where the creek starts and where my property is, and I'm a quarter mile away from No Name Creek, and they said I'm in a flood plain. So thank you.
Thank you.
Derek Bray, Tamarack Lodge. Well, there's no question in my mind that it was the agreement to incorporate the DWR awareness maps that created this specific problem. But the end result is that the property owners are the victims. They're the ones who are having to put up with these incorrect maps and subsequent insurance requirements, where in many cases it is never required. We have our own specific case at Tamarack, where actually, July of last year, we lost the sale of a house due to the incorrect FEMA maps, when the buyers were told that they had to purchase flood insurance. It's ridiculous. A recent, I've been following up on this ever since then, I've been digging and digging and digging, I've come up with a lot of things, but a recent, I, I submitted a Loma not too long ago as a last resort to try to get a resolution. And the Loma approval is, has been granted, that, and it's proved that the property in question is not in the flood zone that they depicted. It was, it was showing a creek completely in the wrong direction. And the mandated insurance requirement should never have been imposed. So there are a lot of financial hazard implications behind all this. We need to get those maps corrected. As far as the letter is concerned, I think, I think it's a little weak myself. I think we should demand action from FEMA, not request action, because they are very much in the middle of this, and they are basically almost forcing you to, to take There is some, some reference to a $1 million that has been set aside or to be spent on establishing base flood elevations for the 7,000 or so properties that have been included in the FEMA maps, that's within Calaveras County.
30 seconds.
Hmm?
30 seconds, you have 30 seconds left.
I'm sorry, how, how much time do we have?
Three minutes. Three minutes?
Hmm?
Three minutes.
In the, I'm sorry, let me, let me.
You're.
In the rules for open, it says five minutes. So I think you, we are, it should be allowed five minutes.
So we, we announced before the meeting the three minutes, but go ahead and finish, sir.
Well, I'm going to have to cut this very short, but I think there's a lot of issues here that you're not even aware of and you should be thinking about. What I have here is the full, full content of what I want to talk about, which was probably going to be about five minutes, but if you're going to cut me short, so be it. So I'm going to pass these out for you.
I actually would like to hear it myself.
Hmm?
I would like to hear it myself.
You'd like to hear?
I, I would like to hear it if the rest of the board would agree to that.
Would you like me to continue?
Yes, please continue.
What?
Please continue.
Continue.
Continue. I have difficulty hearing, so.
That's okay.
Excuse me.
That's okay.
The reference to best available data really doesn't have any meaning unless you include in many cases what I'll call ground level surveying. You can't get the information that you want as accurate enough from the surveying that they've been done. Even the LiDAR is not sufficient. I understand LiDAR has only been done on the lower parts of the county anyway, not for the upper country, or high country where we are. I think some reference should be made to the letter that I received from Ray Wright from FEMA, in which they are saying that even if we do use updated information, they will not include that in their maps. Therefore, we're stuck where we are. The, the, the property owners are going to have to fight this on their own unless we can get a resolution or get something done through the county. And this is an expensive process. It's surveying, it's about $1,000 to get a survey done, and it takes a lot of time and effort to do it. And I think I agree with the idea that Tom McClintock should be involved. This is not just a local issue, it's a national issue. There are problems with FEMA maps all over the country, and the only way to get this resolved is some kind of, I don't know, resolution at the high level, as high as we can go. So we can do whatever we can here, but ultimately, I, I don't think we're going to have too much success with FEMA, based on the attitudes I've seen coming out of FEMA. There are some things that we can do to try to mitigate where we stand. Where, we, the property owners have a problem right now. I don't think too many of the 7,000 or so properties really know that they're in a flood zone. I'm pretty sure they don't, because I've talked to a few of them, and every time I've talked to them, they said, well, we don't know, we were never, we were never told. The way to get around this would be for maybe the county to inform those 7,000 properties that they have been included in the FEMA flood list. And then we can go on from there to research what it is. Sometimes it's just that the map shows a tiny little bit of the property included in the flood zone, not where the, not where a structure is, not where a structure would be built, but just a tiny little bit, and that, that puts them into the flood zone, and it subjects them to these, subjects them to these unnecessary and almost illegal insurance You know, the bottom line of this whole thing is money, economics. FEMA's goal is to obtain as much insurance money as it can irrespective of any kind of realistic flood danger. FEMA does not want the expense of providing technically verifiable maps, which have been defined by this year's Flood Affordability Act earlier this year. The county, I think, needs to provide the help to these 7,000 properties so that they know that they are in a flood zone and they get some idea what can be done to solve the problem should it come up. It should not be the individual owner's responsibility to prove that they are not in a flood danger, and it is an expensive process, $1,000, thereabouts, based on my Bottom line is FEMA really has no incentive to resolve the map issues, and the longer they can delay, the more insurance they can collect on these incorrectly mapped properties. So I think we've got to escalate this. I don't think you're going to get a satisfactory answer from FEMA based on the letter, unless it's a very, very strong letter, which I don't think it is. So I think you should take these into account. If you want a copy of everything that I've written down here, I haven't said everything, but if you want a copy of this, I have several copies available, so, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I, I got the information that you're the owner of Tamarack Lodge?
Yes.
What, what is your name?
Derek Bray.
Derek Bray, thank you. If you'd like to leave a copy with the board clerk, she can make copies for all of us.
David Toono, Ranch of Calaveras. I also have a, some problems with the letter itself. I understand the letter is to FEMA, and so they probably understand more of what you're talking about here, but inasmuch as you've copied it to the congressman's office, which is a, a good idea, I expect that you want it to serve as an executive summary of the issue for that, for the purpose of that office, for the benefit of that office, so they know what you're talking about. And as an executive summary, I, I don't think it works. I also agree that it needs to be stronger, and they should really aim it at the congressman's office for the reasons that this gentleman has already explained. And, and FEMA can, can understand, can take it for what it's worth. That is, that it's more information than FEMA needs, but who cares? It's really aimed at the, should be aimed at McClintock's office. For example, in the first paragraph, you mentioned the Atkins Calaveras County flood plane modeling and mapping. I don't know what Atkins is, what that Atkins component is, I don't know if the congressman's office knows that, but if they're like me, they're not going to understand the relevance of that. In the third paragraph, bottom of the page here, you, you write that, a failed attempt at using LiDAR, but you don't indicate what the failure was, because in the next sentence, I believe it is, you write, "The most recent quote solution presented by FEMA is the preparation of highly accurate LiDAR topographical data. How could it be failed on the one hand and highly accurate on another?" And then that sentence goes on to read, "And," that is, "the combination of the highly accurate LiDAR topographical data and the Atkins Calaveras County flood plain model." You describe that as a solution, with "solution" in quotes, "presented by FEMA." And then the next sentence in that, the last sentence in that paragraph says, "However, none of the solutions proposed so far involve the actual incorporation by FEMA of this more accurate data into the county's FEMA maps." Which is it? FEMA has proposed these solutions, or FEMA has rejected these solutions?
30 seconds. Okay, Mr. Toono.
The next paragraph, FEMA asserts that "In order for the county to use LiDAR, to use the LiDAR-derived flood plains, the board must formally adopt these flood plains as the best available data." And you say that's not, that's not advisable, because that puts the 7,271 people in the position of having to prove the negative, that the property isn't in the flood plain. They've had to prove that since 2009, so that is not a new development. I don't understand why you, you characterize it as a new development. And so my question is also, does the county not want to adopt this formula because it doesn't? doesn't know what the numbers are going to be yet as a result of adopting it? Is it reserving judgment on it, in effect? That's not clear from this letter, what your problem is with this combination of LIDAR and Atkins. And then, as I previously stated, it's not clear who's proposing it, who's rejecting it, and for what reasons. So, bottom line is, for this to be an executive summary for the benefit of McClintock's office, it needs some work. Oh, and I wanna congratulate whoever it was in the county that came up with the, the opinion that the FEMA plan, the FEMA scheme, is nothing more than a money grab by FEMA, which was word for word out of my report that I wrote and submitted to this county five years ago.
Thank you.
Good morning again, House of Senate, Calaveras County Taxpayer Association. I, we concur with Mr. Bray, and we previously had suggested that the disbehandling at the, at the federal level with our representatives. This was done in an attempt by previous congressmen, and it sort of bogged down into nothing really happened. And so, we think that the, the letter is, is a good effort. It may need some correction that Mr. Toono pointed out, but I think we need to go beyond that now. We're blessed in this country with a constitution. We don't have to be victims of any illegal and unlawful activity of any government level. And apparently, it's becoming so that this is what's happening with FEMA, FEMA insurance. The Tenth Amendment of our constitution says that those things that are not specified in the constitution are left to the states or to the people. Okay, now, our state government does, has passed laws to protect people from insurance scams, which this apparently is. And so, to find a solution, we'd probably need to do two things. Number one, contact our federal representative regarding the constitutionality of FEMA, which may cause them to become much more conscious of what they're doing. And then also contact our state representatives about the application of insurance law. When, when the federal government goes beyond the constitution, the states have the ability to, to nullify such activity. And so, the state of California doesn't have to allow its citizens to be victims of scams like this is. So, either as part of this letter, or maybe as a follow-up, there should be a, a conversation with our, our federal representative, and also our state representatives to, to find real solutions to this problem to protect the property rights of the citizens of our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Vicki Rainkey, Calaveras County Republicans. First of all, I wanna thank you guys for taking this issue on as a county, because I know this has been around a long time. Our group has heard from David Toono a couple of years ago on this issue, and, you know, we voted that we would work to help get this resolved, and it just is one of those things, it feels like you're running in sand, because nothing seems to happen. So, I think your action that you're taking today is gonna be a huge push towards maybe making some of these things happening. And hearing Mr. Bray speak, and he has the same information that we heard from David Toono, so these men have done a lot of homework, they have a lot of knowledge about what's going on, and I hope that you, you know, will get with them and, and use all that knowledge that they have, because I, what they're talking about is what, as citizens, we get very upset about, and that's that overreach of the federal government coming into our lives and making havoc, for what reason? You've said that yourselves, that this is absurd, what they're doing, and making property owners now have to prove that they have, their property is not in a flood zone. So, anyway, first of all, I wanna say that. The other thing is that, as citizens, we will work parallel with you, putting letters to McClintock's office, doing some meetings alongside, because I think the more voices they hear, the better, and I think we're learning that now in our society. It used to be that we could just go along with letting our representatives be able to do things, but now we realize our representatives need us behind them to get things done. So, I want you to know that we will continue to work, hopefully, with Mr. Bray now, and we are working with David Toono to try to make this issue an important issue for the citizens as well. So, I wanna thank you, and I do agree that maybe this letter needs to be a little more direct. I think you got some good ideas from, from David and Mr. Bray on how to do that, 'cause, you know what, we're fed up with this. Why they think they can get away with just doing this to the people is wrong, and you guys are gonna be one of the forefront of making sure that this gets changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elections do have consequences. It's amazing to, maybe I put it on public TV, the video I have and audios I have from Longland's office, when the three supervisors hopefully cooperating to get this thing going. This FEMA is the best engineering practices they had, but again, you had to go through a great amount of expense, each individual property owner, to prove what a ridiculous, phony BS FEMA pulled on this county. Because some people let him do it, and it does affect property values and et cetera. So, there's a change. I wanna bring it to your attention and all principles involved. From Longland's office won't be with us next year, and there's gonna, there's some changes made in the federal level. Hopefully, you're gonna make some progress. I'm kinda ticked off of all these constituents that we have in this county, the 7,400, they always had a choice to get insurance. But far as I'm concerned, in my humble opinion, they got sold out. And best engineering practices, I don't care if it's county level, state, or federal level, it's, well, I don't know which is a very nice way to put it diplomatically, but it's not acceptable. The natural, the Committee for Natural Resources, hopefully, we can get a little bit of cooperation, and Congress will, hopefully, can give us a help to make it incentive for FEMA to, if they wanna keep their job, they better shape up or ship out, because this county got the royal shaft, and they don't deserve it. So, it's been going a long time, very expensive consequences, so, I'm gonna compliment that this thing gets going, and hopefully, we're successful. This might take a little time, but don't fight the law, just fight the lawmakers. They're always replaceable. Thank you.
Joe Kelly, this is your LIDAR. This is reality. I suggest that within this letter, you proposed to FEMA to pay the Loma processing that puts a surveyor on the ground using GIS or latest technology. That's the best way to take care of this thing. I would also hope that Ms. Callaway will provide some of her insights, and she's the last standing supervisor through this whole thing. That would be interesting. My concern today is, just to bring you folks up to speed, two things up to speed, but way down here is a 1375.4. Up here is 1356.4, a 19-foot drop from there to there. That's quite a long distance. It's a very light slope down to bring that water in. Now, just yesterday, I was talking to a gentleman, it is a consultant to Caltrans and COG on the wagon trail alignment project, and the Nassau Creek Bridge that's going to be changed with culverts and a new concrete facility. They don't know if they're gonna put a big facility in or a smaller facility, do some stoppage, blockage of the water downstream. What they, he did say is, at this point, what they're looking at is supposedly they have the water, the current watershed information, and that it won't, to my property, will not exceed the current status. So, the current status is still gonna be this. So, this thing has to be dealt with, as FEMA sent in that email that said the county has a potential violation and needs to deal with it. So, I'm wondering personally, what are you gonna do? I keep asking you to do your job. I'm not demanding, I'm just asking. But you folks now wanna demand to FEMA. I think FEMA's just gonna, I'm not quite sure what they're gonna do. So, I think you need to figure out the strategy that's gonna work the best, and why, a gentleman just asked me, "Well, why can't the county back out of this contract, back out of this FEMA thing? Is there a contractual obligation that disallows it?" I mean, every, the two surrounding counties that I looked at, all, every, in this county, we all have the flood plane management ordinances, and I believe that's statewide. I didn't look to all the counties, but I think I looked at a couple others. So, the cities and the counties would have that information there. So, does that then put a burden on the counties and the cities that they cannot back out of a FEMA agreement? Well, we're the only ones with a FEMA agreement. Can we not back out of it and deal with it, let the county deals with it themselves as it comes down the pike? Because otherwise, what, what, what is FEMA doing with the rest of the state, counties and cities in the state? We're the only ones being obligated by this thing, and they can't do it right. Now, this part here, this property here, these three properties, did have surveyors on the ground. They did do GIS, they did a special studies on it. But I have the information on it, but I don't have the program to open it. So, that doesn't do me any good. Hopefully, the surveyor I'm using for my Loma might have that, and then be able to provide me, and if it shows the same thing here, then they fail to do their job of this, which goes across my property and across Baylen Creek Road and causes public health, safety, and general welfare problem, which is the three responsibilities of the county, which was put into play through the National Flood Insurance Plan in 1968, the Kobe Elquist Act in 1977, where the state handed down to the county, the requirement of land use, flood identify, well, let's see, identifying flood planes and flood plane management. So, you've got it from the federal government to the state government down to you folks. So, somewhere, somebody has to step up and start taking care of business at the county level. I mean, I, our planning department's person involved in this is doing a good job. She's swamped, I know that, she's working hard on this thing, and doing a good job. I find it sad that, as I said, Ms. Callaway is the last standing supervisor, and we've been through so many planning directors and other people, and such as Deborah is the last person of the line of the people dealing with the FEMA issue in this county for the planning department. Let's hope she stays here, and Mr. Maurer stays here, so we can get a little continuance in this thing for a while. So, that's my comment. Propose that they pay for it. And I can't see why, since if it's a contractual obligation and this county has signed on to it, is what would keep the people that are having to pay whatever they're paying, a thousand dollars to 1,600 dollars for a Loma to come back as a, either separately or as a combined effort to sue the county to pay for it? You folks have mandated it, basically. Something to think about, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on this item?
I might as well throw my two cents worth. Every time this issue comes up, I think about President Bush, and he said, "Good job, Brownie", about the New Orleans hurricane. I have two comments. One of them is that we have an insurance commissioner that was elected, re-elected this year, Dave Jones, and we should be firing a letter off to him. And the other person is a person that was born and raised in this county, who was a former insurance commissioner, John Guaramendi, and we should be firing a letter off to him asking his expertise on what we could possibly do. That's my two points. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion. So, Peter, do you have any, any particular answers, your clarification to some of the comments?
There's been several suggestions that the language be more demanding, more terse. I think the problem that we face is that we really have very little leverage, and we can demand all we want, and they can throw it in the trash. I tried to strike a balance between, you know...
Could you speak up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Tried to strike a balance in the, in the language of the letter between, you know, just decency, respect, and, but still expressing our frustration, asking that they do, you know, if we wanna change it to a demand, I'm not sure it's gonna make much difference, and I'm just concerned that we don't really have a lot of leverage in order to demand anything. The issues that Mr. Toono raised, I suppose it could be a little clearer that, that the last sentence of that third paragraph that carries over on the next page was really the, the issue was that we have the solutions, FEMA just doesn't want to incorporate them into the maps. So, we have the data, and that's what I was trying to say, and maybe it could have been a little bit clearer, that, you know, we've done all kinds of good mapping, yet FEMA says, "Oh, sure, the board can adopt these, these maps, but we're still gonna require each individual property owner to go through the Loma process." It doesn't solve the problem, and that's, and so if you would like, we could maybe rephrase that somewhat to clarify that point.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the letter is, is kind of, you know, once again, we're bringing this to your attention, now, let's meet and work this out. So, the content of the letter, in my humble opinion, is, is not really that important. The important thing is doing the work outside of that letter. If we just send a letter, no matter what we say in that letter, it doesn't mean a damn if we don't do something...
Right.
...beyond that, and that's what we have to do. You know, we have to talk, I like, I think George's suggestions were solid, you know, that this is part of the administration, of the President's administration, and he's a Democrat, so, you know, it might be smart to contact John Guaramendi, who's a Democrat, and Dave Jones, who's a Democrat, and also have experience with these issues. So, I think those are, are good, solid recommendations, bringing in both sides of the party, because I think everybody can agree that it's just a, one of those issues we can all rally around that we need to change, you know? And so, let's bring everybody in together and, and force the issue. And so, the letter, I think, is fine right now, in my opinion, to send if you guys wanna tweak it, I don't care, but, you know, let's just move it along, move it down, and make sure we have a face-to-face with Congressman McClintock to begin with, since he is our congressman, and you guys, you know, can help us with that, too.
Okay, any other comments or questions on this?
Ms. Maurer, I think the question is, is, which continually has come up, if we withdrew, that means those people who do need flood insurance could no longer get it. And, and the other part of that is, if we accept the maps, as FEMA keeps insisting on, then they walk away, and that's not acceptable to us.
That is a concern that we have, is, you know, they want us to take a certain route in fixing the problem, and our concern is, is if we do adopt these maps as best available data, they're gonna say, "Fine, everything's fixed," and it won't have been fixed.
And it's not fixed.
So, that's why we're hesitant to do that at this point in time. I don't know the specifics of what would happen if... I don't know the specifics of what would happen if we withdrew from the program. In general, I know that we would be, not be available or not have available to us emergency funds if there were disaster, disaster funding if there were flooding. So, if we don't participate in the, in the program, then if there was a disaster, we would not get any federal funds in that case. And I don't know if that applies just to fu, to flooding or all potential federal disaster issues. And I think that lenders would still require flood insurance, whether we participated in it or not.
Right, and that's what it gets back to, so...
Yeah. So, just simply withdrawing from the program is probably not an acceptable alternative.
I had a question about, you know, Mr. Tuno asked about the language in it. So, talking about Atkins, is that something that FEMA is, I, I really don't know what that is either. So, is that something FEMA would recognize as to what that is?
Yes, Atkins was an engineering firm that did some mapping, that worked in context with the LiDAR mapping to provide more accurate data. And they are aware of this, you know, we didn't go into a lot of detail what all this was, because they know what it is.
Right, okay. But it's an engineering firm...
Yes.
...that worked on this. You know, I agree much of what Chris was saying about, you know, the, you know, the letter is like, we need to meet and do something, I mean, you know, so trying to pull the parties together. I like the idea of pulling other interested elected officials into this situation, because I think they would have some additional help and support to get, to get acknowledged here that this is a mistake and we need to correct it. And, you know, I think McClintock's office, I don't know if that's kind of a separate discussion to kind of, you know, really go into a lot of detail, as, as Mr. Tuno said, like that executive summary. I don't know how much detail they're aware of with their staff. I know there's lots of changes with that as well. But, you know, this goes out to FEMA and such, but also, you know, kind of a side meeting, I don't know if it's a side meeting, but a meeting with Mr. McClintock and his staff to bring them up to speed, you know, what we've been dealing with over the years on this issue.
I, I think that that's the intent here, is to put it on their radar. I think to try to explain the long history of this, you know, an eight or 12-page letter probably just to start, and that's more than what this is necessarily, I think that if McClintock's office gets interested in this, he'll, you know, contact us, we'll meet with them, we'll go through all the detail, update his office so they know what's going on. I'm sure that they'll do, you know, they'll hear from the other side as well and see what FEMA's perspective, and, you know, hopefully that can be a bridge between us and them. You know, I don't, I don't know how much of it is simply lower-level bureaucrats not wanting to participate, or if they're getting actual directive from above, you know, there's just so much I don't know about the inner workings of FEMA to know exactly what's going to be the best course of action. But I think by raising the awareness of it to higher-level officials, to let them know that Congressman is involved in the discussion, hopefully will at least create some movement. I'm hoping that we can have a positive discussion in a couple of weeks with their staff, and it seems like they're bringing some upper-level people into the, into the discussion now rather than just the regional representatives that we've been working with in the past. So, but I think this letter, and whether we want to tweak it or not is up to you. It's just, the purpose of it is to raise the awareness and let them know that it's not just staff level that's, you know, being frustrated, it's now the elected officials in the county, and we're bringing to the awareness of the elected officials at the federal level.
All right, well, thank you, Peter, for bringing this forward. I think it's long overdue, and I'm glad that, you know, you're here to help with that. At first, I thought, yeah, let's, you know, be more demanding, too, but I already know how that closes doors rather than opens them. I think that the first, this first letter is probably good. Everybody there knows what we're talking about. I think that we should prepare for a separate discussion or the next level. And I like, again, what Chris said about, about George's suggestions, sending out to other elected officials. Yeah, I mean, it would be really, really, really great if, if McClintock and Gueramendi could come together on this and, you know, unite in this effort, for sure, because that's when something would get done, I'm pretty sure. But there, you know, I, I understand the frustration of, of the folks in the county, because I know people that have been here, their families, for 160 years. They're in a floodplain, it's never flooded in 160 years. So, there's a lot of bad data that's involved in this. And I think it should be FEMA's responsibility to have accurate data, especially if they're going to be charging people or forcing people to buy a product, and so...
The bottom line, that's what we're asking for. Just use the most accurate data that's available. We can't get them to do that.
So, I'm just wondering if, you know, the data that we're asking them to use is accurate. And, you know, I, I know they have lots of things nowadays, GPS and, and all kinds of different technologies that I probably have no idea what it is. But this isn't, you know, I'm not really fond of FEMA and their, you know, and I don't trust them, to tell you the truth. So, you know, it just, it just frustrates me to know, and that the folks around here, like these folks over here, were talking about how they lost the sale of a house or a sale of a property, and then, and of course, the, you know, the, the property values that are lost because of this bureaucratic stuff, you know? So, if you, you're starting on this and you're, you're not going to back off, I'm sure.
Oh, no.
All right, so, you know, I would like actually updates all the time.
I will provide the board with an update after our meeting on the 10th.
So, if we have to write a second letter, I think it needs to be extremely strong. And I would suggest that maybe we can talk to, like, Mr. Tuno, get some, get some, some of his notes and some of the, because he studies it, and, and, you know, he's, he's the, he's the strong one. He's, he's the strong letter writer. And, and then, too, maybe there could be a little bit of collaboration between us and the public, because they want also to write letters of support. It would be really nice if we're all writing the same letters in the same direction to the same folks, so that we get the biggest bang for our buck as well. Thanks.
So, what's the expected timeframe for a response from your point of view?
I, I don't know. I, you know, I don't know what the response would be. They could just sort of say, meh, garbage can, and continue on their way. I, hopefully, hopefully they wouldn't. Hopefully, that Mr. McClintock's office might contact us in the next, you know, several weeks to say, well, what, how can I help? What can I do to step in and assist the county? I think it's an ongoing, evolving issue that, you know, we're going to have to keep pressure on constantly. And so, a follow-up letter after our meeting on the 10th, depending on what the result of that is, is probably worthwhile, and...
So, we see sending this letter out if we agree today within the next few days, and then there's a letter on December, or a meeting on December 10th?
Mm-hmm.
All right?
Yes.
All right. So, you think within 30 days a response from this letter, one way or the other?
I would think we'd probably hear something back from them.
Okay. All right. And so, what I hear the board saying is that we want to include some additional people on here? So, you had mentioned the person that you're meeting with on the 10th?
Yes. Juliette Hayes...
Juliette Hayes.
Dave Jones, the insurance commissioner, and Congressman Gueramendi.
Gueramendi?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Is there anybody else that you see?
Start there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any amendments to the letter? Do we want to change or direct Peter to change any?
No, it is. He's, he's, yeah. He's a forward motion. I know he is, but Dave Jones is the commissioner now.
But Gueramendi...
I'm listening.
Yeah, but we're going to make them give some...
So, there's some discussion about whether or not we include Mr. Gueramendi on the letter?
It's fine. Nothing to die on the sword on. I think it's inappropriate. McClintock is our Congressman, and we need to be working with McClintock. I'm sure Mr. Gueramendi has, outside of the fact, unless he has property that's in a flood zone.
He probably does.
I don't.
Okay. Do we need official approval on this letter for Peter to, oh, I know it's going out of my...
So, the chair sign the letter.
Yeah.
Right, it would be the chair's.
Okay. That answered that one.
As amended.
Okay, so, we have the letter then, that we have a, who, who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Rita.
And second? All right, so we have motion made by Supervisor Callaway, second by Supervisor Edson, to send this letter to FEMA as amended, which includes adding Hayes, Jones, and Gueramendi as CC copies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I need to recognize Deborah Lewis, because she has spent daily time with constituents and FEMA on this issue. And when people want to do a Loma, she gives as much information as she has to their engineers or surveyors. And, I mean, if you go in and talk to her, be prepared to spend a couple of hours on this. Deborah, you have done an awesome job in dealing with FEMA. Not that we've gotten anywhere, but your dedication to what the goals are of the board on this issue and the community have been outstanding, and I really thank you for your support and dedication to that.
Announce the vote.
Thanks, Representative Callaway, and she has been very helpful with all the constituents that come in to try to work through this issue.
Thank you. Okay, that motion carries on a 4-0 with one absent. Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Deborah. Okay, I've asked a couple of folks, I've asked for a five-minute recess, so I'm going to give a recess at this time, and we'll reconvene to address item number 24. We have sound there, Susan? Okay. Reconvening after the recess, we're on to item number 24 at this moment. This is approving a resolution to change the names of multiple county maintained roads. And I have our interim Public Works Director, Robert, to present this item.
Good morning, Robert Pakenger, Public Works. The county has a listing of county maintained roads. This listing has, is very long history to the list. At the moment, there's a discrepancy between the listing and the county maintained roads, the information that's in the GIS system, which is comparable with what the assessor's parcel maps have, and then the actual street names, the plates on the corners, on, on the intersections of the streets, and the addresses that people have for their mailing and so forth. So, this item is a public hearing to have the people have an opportunity to express their thoughts about this process and the names on the proposed name changes. What we intended to do for the most part, and perhaps we could have done this in an administrative fashion, but I prefer to do it in, in this more formal setting, because that way there's no confusion in years from now when people look back at different lists and they wonder, what happened here? Why did things change? So, what we're trying to do for the most part is change the names on the list that we have here in the Public Works Department. That's the, the method that would least impact any of the people that live on any of those, on any of these roads. So, the people that have their addresses, for the most part, will see no effect, no change, because they're already using their street names consistent with the GIS system and consist, consistent with the appraisal, the appraisers' maps. There are some roads, though, that do have to have a change that the people will see an impact. Those roads, we, on this list table one, you'll see a few of the roads. One is Old Powerhouse Road, and there are six of the 10 parcels that currently have that as an address. Four of the parcels do not, so this action will affect the four people, the four houses on that road. The other one is Evergreen Drive. There is a problem with having a couple of Evergreen Drives, and so, we are proposing to change the name of one of those Evergreen Drives, the one that has 28, there's 28 parcels on that road that would be affected, as opposed to the other road, it had more than 28 parcels. And then, Roleri Ranch Road, the portion within the City of Angels was renamed to Roleri Bypass Road. I'm sorry, I have it backwards. The portion within the City of Angels was named Roleri Ranch Road, so that is a roadway that extends into the county maintained portion. We're trying to make, we're proposing to change the name within the county maintained portion to match with what the City of Angels has already done. There are four properties there that would be affected. The, the issue here is trying to maintain clarity so that emergency services or any of those services are able to reach these homes as quickly as possible and to avoid any confusion.
Thank you. Have you had any property owner just adversely not agree with this change?
I have not received any information in regards to this item.
There's one.
Okay. Mr. Pakenger, just before we reconvene, Mr. Harris, who lives on Dam Road, they are recommending that it says Dam Road, not go to Old Powerhouse Road. So, when it's recommended that everything's listed as Old Powerhouse, but the residents who live there are saying, but we've known it to be Dam Road. I don't, excuse me, I don't know where it states that it's Old Powerhouse Road. And is there a way we can negotiate or pull that one off the list until we can meet with the property owners? I was given some information, which is here, and so, they have six people or six properties that would like to keep it as Dam Road versus Old Powerhouse Road. Is there, what are the challenges from your perspective with doing that?
Well, currently, from my understanding of looking at the records, there are six parcels on that road that currently have an address of Old Powerhouse Road. We're trying to reconcile that so that the entire, all the people that live on that, on that road have one address. It has one name.
Where, where does it state that it's Old Powerhouse Road?
That's in the GIS system, and I believe it's, it may be in the assessor's maps.
Assessor's parcel? So, there's the facts that it's listed, and then there's the feelings of the people who live there who would like to keep it as Dam Road. of the people who live there who would like to keep it as Dam Road. Is there a way to change the GIS to match the desires of the community?
Does it like go up to a certain point and then change, or is it intermixed?
At this point, I would have to ask my partners in GIS to give me a hand with some of those questions.
Well, I suppose we pull that.
We could pull that. That's possible to pull that so that we could resolve the rest and continue working on that one item.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris, did you want to say anything or just?
Yeah, I'm Ron Harris, and I live at 660 Dam Road. And I guess it's the tax records or whatever it is that says Old Powerhouse. But there's a street that says Dam Road. All the mailboxes are addressed Dam Road on the road, except a couple that have, there's two that have P.O. boxes, I guess. And those two, but I got signatures of everybody that lives on the road. The only one that I didn't get signatures of is, there's two houses that are vacant. There's only six total. I got four signatures. And one's, one of the homes is for sale in vacant, and the other is like an investment house in vacant. So everybody that's living on the road would like to keep it Dam Road. It's been that way forever. And where Old Powerhouse comes, and there's been a lot of confusion over the years, Utica Powerhouse Road, and my address actually used to be Highway 4 because it used to be the old Highway 4 before they put in the dam, and then they rerouted the road up towards Arnold, you know?
Well, I think that's what we're trying to do, is be consistent. And so either all one way or all the other.
We're hoping it's Dam Road because everybody gets their mail to Dam Road. And myself personally, I had to change, I just got a driver's license with Dam Road on it. I changed driver's licenses, bank accounts, mortgage statements, and lots, lots of stuff. And, and then our neighbor there, one of my neighbors is a 93-year-old lady that I have a letter from.
She just aged 10 years from when you were talking to me before the meeting. It was, she was 83 and now she's 93?
No, she's not.
I am not going on your street anymore.
Anyway, she's 93. And anyway, so my request is, you know, I appreciate your, your input here to try, pull it and try and keep it Dam Road. And I'd be happy to communicate with whoever that I get.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pakenger.
Okay. At this time, I'll open it up to any other public comments?
Peter Rice Genelin, we're trying to correct something that previous supervisors did not have time to consider. I mean, I'm glad that your first thought is that county maintained road. Well, that's wonderful, but the county wants to have control of those roads. And even though they don't like to admit it, there's certain liability comes out of those, assuming that they control it but have no responsibility. My street is not on the list, but that was a total mess. Because for one thing, the street not supposed to change name and it comes to another street. The numbers, I don't know who picked it out. Maybe it was one of those bingo things that, hey, give these people numbers. They're supposed to be even and odd numbers. But the county still insists it's a county road. Well, if you own it, you own the good and the bad of it. And it doesn't bother me what my house number is. Google recognizes it. The fire department, fire chief, they know where I live. But it's still your staff did a shitty job back a couple of years ago, the ones works for you directly. And I would like to, you consider it, that all numbers gets corrected. Because if emergency vehicle comes in, there's supposed to be even number or odd numbers, some ambulance company comes up and somebody gets hurt because the numbers were assigned, the street names was assigned, it's totally wrong because somebody on your staff did not do their due diligence, you still have a fiduciary responsibility for it. You want to claim that road? You're responsible for that road. There's a number, way too many numbers, county roads, that you claim to have control over it, are not up to safety standard that's supposed to be. And it's nobody's fault except the Board of Supervisors because your staff screwed up. So hopefully that this thing is continued and gets things done countywide. I don't care if it's your planning department or Public Works Department that made the mistakes in the past years. You are still, as a Board of Supervisor, not as an individual, the Board of Supervisors, there can be consequences. Take a good look at it. You got a good man here who realizes the problem. But he's gonna have to be taken care of county-wise, not just what they maintain. County roads, and that's on your head. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional board or public comments on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion or possible action. So what I heard earlier was that we could remove the, current name is Dam Road, item, Road 404 as it's identified here in our summary. Take that off of this particular discussion at this point and bring it back after some further review with some of the property owners along the road there?
Yes, we'll bring that back at a later time. This list is not comprehensive. As time goes on, we'll try to keep working at it.
Okay. Are there any other thoughts or comments from the board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion by Supervisor Edson and second by Supervisor Wright to approve a resolution to change the name to multiple county maintained roads, deleting the old dam or Dam Road from this particular resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries 4-0 with one absent. Thank you, Robert. From the Administrative Office, this is item number 25, introduced after a waiver of the reading requirements and ordinance amending County Code, Chapter 3.04, Procedure for Leasing County Realty by Updating Lease Exclusions Commensurate with the County, or excuse me, the Government Code.
Hi, Mary Rosary Dicanga with the Administrative Office. I just want to first point out that it's actually introduced after a waiver of reading requirements and ordinance amending County Code, Chapter 3.40, not 04.
Okay.
And this is for leasing of county realty. The rest of the staff memo reflects the 3.40. It's just in that recommended part. This is coming before you merely as a way to update our ordinance code to reflect state law. The County Board of Supervisors adopted County Ordinance 3.40.050 back in 1986, reflecting then current state law, which gave exclusion for bidding procedures of county real property, for not exceeding $1,000 per month, and also a lease that it did not extend five years. We would like to have the ordinance reflecting the Government Code 25537, which now states of a lease that does not exceed $10,000 per month and does not exceed 10 years in duration. We would also like the ordinance to reflect that we would authorize the exclusion under Government Code 25537. So when the state does change their law, this ordinance code is then reflected of that change. We have noticed that by keeping the $1,000 limit and the five-year limit, this allows for a great amount of time and staff time for bidding procedures and so forth. And so we'd really like it to reflect the government, or excuse me, the Government Code and state law now.
Was this recent state law?
You know, I don't know. Megan or Julie would have to address that. I don't know. They have changed, the state law has changed numerous times since 1986. I don't know how recent it has been to reflect the new $10,000 or the 10-year. I wouldn't know.
Julie Moss Lewis, Deputy County Counsel. The law is actually pretty old, and under the Government Code, there's a default bidding procedure that if you don't, if the board doesn't adopt an ordinance, would be basically that every single lease of county realty would have to go out to bid. Most counties have adopted an alternate procedure, which can be adopted by counties under this code section by ordinance. And we adopted that back in 1986 when the maximum leases that could be exempt from the bidding procedure were $1,000 per month. So the now, or since then, there have been actually multiple amendments to extend basically the definition of a small lease. And state law, at this point, a lease of $10,000 a month is considered small enough to allow for exemption from bidding requirements. And so rather than continuing to come before you and update our code as inflation and costs increase, the purpose of the ordinance is to basically say that the county exemption can apply to whatever the maximum that's allowed under state law. And that way, if state law changes, as leases become more expensive, our ordinance will automatically reflect back to the state code. And the idea there is to allow for a streamlined procedure. For the, the board would still have to approve these leases. If they just, the county wouldn't have to go through a bidding procedure, and we wouldn't have to do the more extensive publication.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the board? Any public comments on this item?
My own question is, is that what harm is it if you put it out to bid? What do you got to lose? It's a pain in the butt for your staff. But is it possible, maybe you can get a bid that's lower, save some money? That's the worst thing that can happen. I might know, hey, I realize the state doesn't like its own rules, and I can bring up examples. What harm could it be if you put it out to bid? At least you know you got the best deal that's possible. What do you got to lose? I mean, I want just to know, what's a negative? It might be a pain to go through the process. But what could be the harm? That's what I like to know. Thank you.
Well, as of right now, if you've looked at leasing costs in, in our county and elsewhere in the state, $1,000 is an extremely low amount for us to have to bid every time, and also the publication costs involved in the bidding procedure. We have county property right now that we are, we're trying to lease, and you know, we'd have to put those out to bid because they're just at that $1,000 threshold. And the publication costs alone with that, it, it wouldn't be that we would be doing away with bidding. It's just that we would increase it to that $10,000 threshold to allow for higher cost leasing. And the lower cost leasing, we could more efficiently streamline the process and allow our county property to be leased.
It's almost like you're gonna pull a building permit. If it's a real simple project, it's going in over the counter type permit. If it's a more extensive piece of property, then it's going through this process of bidding for.
Mm-hmm.
Any other public, excuse me?
Sorry. So the bidding process isn't about bidding for work or contractors. It's every time that, that we have to lease out, or we're gonna lease a piece of property out, it has to go through a bidding process, which is, sometimes can be expensive.
It's expensive and.
And so, and it takes up time. So it just reflects the, what you're saying is it reflects the state laws, it changes, which makes this a less expensive process for the county.
Any other public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion or make a motion.
Make a motion approved. Second?
I have a motion made by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Edson, to introduce after a waiver of the reading requirements and ordinance amending County Code, Chapter 3.40, Procedure for Leasing County Realty by Updating the Lease Exclusions Commensurate with the Government Code. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries 4-0 with one absent. Item number 26, AB 109, Approve a Spending Plan Adjustment to Replace BI Incorporated with a County-Run Day Reporting Center. Approve Creation of Four New Positions Using State Realignment Funds. Approve Budget Transfers for Probation in Health and Human Services. This item requires a four-fifths vote by the Board of Supervisors. And Sam, we have you to present this item today?
Thank you for allowing me to present today. I took over as Chief Probation Officer and Chair of the Community Corrections Partnership on May 5th, was my first day. And coming in the door, we already, as you know, had a partnership with BI Incorporated to provide some of the treatment elements of our Day Reporting Center, mainly the moral recognition therapy piece, which is a cognitive behavioral treatment program that they provide over there. There were already concerns with that, but the CCP had already put that in place and then also put an agreement in place to further it into the jail with the extension of another contract, which brought the total that we were funding or paying out of the state realignment funds to BI to $369,000 a year. In exchange for that, we were getting three and a half private sector employees to provide that programming at the Day Reporting Center and in the jail. Frankly, that was a lot of money. Some of those concerns, I know, were raised by Supervisor Wright and echoed by other members of the board. And we were asked to come back with some data to justify what we were spending there, as well as to look into what the alternatives were. So some other concerns that we had as I started looking more into this and partnering with the CCP and some of the voting members was looking at, you know, A, we were spending $369,000 a year. It's a lot of money. It's roughly a third of what we're spending out of that AB 109 unit. And mind you, it is all state general funds that's funding it. It's not general fund monies. But it's still, it's a huge chunk of money, and a good chunk of that is going to a for-profit company based out of Florida. It's not for people here. Staff turnover became an increasingly big issue. It was already an issue upon my arrival, but we were getting feedback from participants at the DRC, some of whom are legitimately trying to turn their lives around, that they're having to open up to a different counselor every other week because of the turnover at BI. So that was a major concern. One of my concerns coming in was that some of the programming we're providing over there was what I would call off the shelf. It was kind of, this is what our program looks like, and hopefully the participants fit into it. Because when you're spending $369,000, and in return for that, you're basically getting MRT, a few other things. But the biggest part of it was they're providing MRT treatment. Everybody needs to fit into that box. And the staff, the three and a half staff that we were getting from BI were, you know, to be fair, we'd get some good people over there, and we still have some good people over there from BI, and they work really hard. So I don't want to dishonor, you know, the service that they've provided. I think they've basically provided what they said they were gonna provide. But it is, from a treatment and rehabilitation standpoint, very limited in its scope, in that it's this manual-based treatment that can be provided by somebody with lower-level counseling skills. Okay? It's not higher-level clinical work, is my point. So I had concerns that we weren't investing enough in higher-level clinical works, both in the jail and at the Day Reporting Center, that I think some people need more than what the manual delivers. Then the other thing is when we, when we hired Michael Hatfield, who's present, and we finally started getting into some of the data and looking at what our completion percentages were, what we were spending per participant. were spending per participant and all of that, frankly, the numbers aren't good. It's not that the treatment wasn't good. I think it was just a little bit disjointed and not, it was incomplete, I think is the best way to say it, as far as what the day reporting center looks like now. It was a good start. There's a history behind why it was developed the way it was. I don't second guess any of that or the actions of my predecessors. I think it was what we needed to do at the time. I think today we have an opportunity to do much more without spending more money. I think we have an opportunity to move forward with the day reporting center that's much more innovative and is much more individualized to the participants. So, oh, and I skipped over, one statistic I wanted to share was that our successful completion percentage from, since the place opened, people who actually graduated the program, is at 27%, which is slightly higher than it was, I think, this summer, the last time I reported out, I think it was in the low twenties. But 27%, you know, I don't want to mislead anybody in the public or on the board in thinking that it's an easy job and we're someday going to have 100% completion rate. We're not. This is an extremely difficult population. But we can beat 27%, frankly. So in looking at some of these things, what we did was we brought the concerns to the Community Corrections Partnership, or CCP. We discussed it with them and whether they would want us to explore the alternative of moving to a county-run day reporting center, rather than continuing our partnership with BI when the contract comes to terminate in February of 2015. So initially, they authorized that, yes, we want to explore alternatives. We created a sub, an ad hoc committee, a subcommittee, and we went out and we toured four different day reporting centers, as well as having numerous conversations with other chairs and chief probation officers, looking at what they did. But we physically went out to four different facilities that were county-run and looked at those as alternatives. Out of that, some of the things that we brought back and what we wanted to do, if we were to place the 369,000, simply that component, and hire county employees to do the same thing, we'd be replacing three and a half private sector employees of a for-profit company with four county employees. Mind you, we're not asking for general fund monies here. So of those four county employees that we're asking for, and this is clearly in the material, but so that the public hears and you understand, two of them will be behavioral health clinicians and two of them will be deputy probation officers. So we're looking at this both from an enforcement standpoint of how many people can we supervise, as well as continuing to provide the same moral recognition therapy that was the cornerstone of the program before and will be the cornerstone moving forward, except that it will be improved in that we will have stable behavioral health clinicians who aren't changing from week to week for the participants. The other thing is having those clinicians available allows us to do higher level clinical work when there are needs for somebody who's either in the jail or at the day reporting center who needs higher level clinical work that frankly, those of us in probation can't necessarily provide, and somebody who's a case manager for a private company and doesn't have the clinical expertise also cannot provide. So that was one thing we wanted to do. We wanted to make sure we weren't spending more money out of the realignment. With the proposal that I've submitted for this agenda item, you'd noticed that we've matched the numbers up so that we're not spending any more than we were under the previous spending plan. We've also run projections three years out to make sure that our costs aren't going to increase substantially from where they are. Let's see. We also wanted to keep the money local. There's something to be said for hiring four county employees here who are invested in our community and want to see, you know, these people succeed. It's not somebody who's being brought over from another county, which is what we're dealing with with BI a lot of the times. And again, I don't mean to knock them as a company, but frankly, I think we can do better. Stable staff, I've already discussed that part. Build a better, more individualized program for the participants. This is a really key issue. The one-size-fits-all approach is something that, you know, the research in my field really pushes us away from. Having clinicians at the front end to meet with people and create a tailored program of what participants will go through is a really critical step. And that's something that I understood coming in, but after seeing what some of the other counties are doing, and Sacramento has a really good day reporting center that comes to mind, Nevada County as well, where they come in and they're really meeting with somebody who's a higher level clinician first, rather than just bringing them in and saying, here's our program, here's where you start, here's where you end. It's a team of substance abuse, who we already have there as county employees and are doing a terrific job. Substance abuse, the behavioral health clinician who can look more at the mental health issues, as well as the probation officers, all meeting as a team with the individuals as they come in to kind of tailor a strategy for what would success look like for this offender. So every offender will be coming through and doing that, and then working off of a case planning model where we'll be able to more, be more responsive to them as individuals in their rehabilitation. And then I think, you know, that's it. I think I've, I could probably ramble on for hours because I get excited about these things and I'm not sure how much more you would all want to hear, or if you have questions more specific that I haven't covered in some of that rant or the materials that have been submitted. So I'll open myself up to questions and public comments at this point.
Okay. Are there any comments, Marita?
Thank you for answering my questions ahead of time. The $23,000, is that an ongoing general fund contribution? And is that something that will continue or will grow as expenses increase and your revenue probably from the state will probably hold quasi-steady?
My understanding, I believe that was already in the previous adopted budget and it had something to, I apologize Supervisor Callaway, I might need my analyst to come bail me out. But I believe it had something to do with a car that was purchased and transferred. Like, can you speak to that? It's a one-time cleanup thing. It's not an ongoing cost, but...
I, Michael Hatfield, CCP analyst. That was actually a vehicle that was purchased in 2012, 2013. The monies were transferred over. Then in 2013, 2014, it was transferred a second time. So that balance was sent to the general fund and there was no expense. So that's just a one-time reimbursement for this year.
Oh, okay. And the DPOs, they'll be doing the home visits like Tara does. I mean, similar, but instead of one person, you now have three people doing the same thing?
Yes. You know, so Tara Johnson, who you've mentioned, she's our DPO3 who's funded over there. Tara tends to run a caseload between 45 and 55, which is really high with that kind of a population, considering she's, you know, trying to twirl a few other plates as well. That being said, Tara's not involved in programming whatsoever. She's basically just doing the enforcement side of things. And for our department to, I don't even like the thought of getting on pace with what other departments are doing. That frustrates me enough. But for our department to move forward and ahead of what other departments are doing, we really need to be more involved in case planning and the rehabilitative components of things. And that's not a knock on Tara as an officer. The system we have was to basically divide, you know, probation does this, the treatment people do this. And there's still something to be said for that. But the more of a partnership there is and the more we're working with behavioral health, the more responsive I think my officers can become to the new realities of what we're being asked to do with these populations. Because frankly, the state's not building more jails. They're not really giving us much to incarcerate people here. I mean, with Prop 47, which frankly, I'm not a fan of, but with all these things going on, I mean, the reality is I've, we've talked much at my department and with the realignment unit that, look, we have to get really skilled at motivating and engaging people. I mean, I need my officers to be much better, much wiser, much more skilled and adept at engaging and motivating the most difficult, less than a fraction of a percent of this county to change. And to do that, they have to be involved to some extent in the treatment components. Now, MRT, I think it goes a little bit deeper to explain the difference between some of the curriculum that we're using. MRT goes a little bit deeper. And these guys, when they're invested, I think there's something to be said for, Mary Suwicky, I keep pointing to you, for the behavioral health people to be running the MRT components. Because I think it's nice for them to have one place that they can go in a treatment setting where they know probation isn't watching them. So there's something to be said for that. But at the same time, the probation people in most of the counties throughout the state are getting involved in the direct service delivery. And here's a way we're going to do that is we're going to move forward with Courage to Change. Now, that program's been around for a while, but it comes and goes. The fidelity to the program hasn't been real good. And, you know, frankly, we need a bigger investment. So we're traveling, next week, there's a group of eight of us that are getting fully trained in Courage to Change, which will add in a social skills component to complement the MRT that's already being done. It's something we'll be running in the jails. It's something we'll be running at the DRC. It's something we'll be running at probation. So we're going to have a much bigger outlay of services that are provided. And we'll be able to not only supervise 75 to 100 people over there out of the day reporting center, but we'll at the same time be asking the Tara's to, you know, cut your caseload in half, but also you need to be delivering Courage to Change and you need to be actively case planning.
No. No, I like the way it's growing. I mean, I don't have a problem with it going back to, going to the county, not going back since we never did it to begin with. So you're doing not only the 109ers, but you're doing those people that are in the jails and that when they are released, they will then go to day reporting center?
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, the people that are in the jail that we would mainly be targeting, especially with the MRT, once we have the clinicians hired, would be those that are going to be coming into the day reporting center, transitioning there. So that'll be our main focus. But when we run groups in the jail for, oh, Captain Ballard was here earlier. So if we go run a Courage to Change group over there, we open it up to everybody, as he can attest to. And that's something that, you know, frankly, it's a difficult partnership to sort out because, you know, we want to be running the groups. The people who are detained over there, a lot of them do want some kind of programming now. So I don't know, the world's changing. We're trying to keep up with it, but it's, we're going to be very much more available under this plan than we were before to provide programming in the jails, quite frankly, and to have a better continuity of care with what happens in the day reporting center and how people transition out of the system altogether on the backend.
So if someone's in a Courage to Change in the jail and then they're released, there's nothing that mandates them to continue Courage to Change?
If they, well, if they were just like a court probation, like where they're not under our watch, there would be nothing that mandates them. But for other folks who are, you know, serving 30 days and then getting released on probation, yeah, absolutely. We'll require them when necessary. We'll require them to participate in a group at the probation department. So we're going to be running Courage at the probation department as well, at the day reporting center and at the jail. And we should be able to pick those people up. So if they, you know, complete a certain amount in the jail, they transition to the day reporting center or probation, we pick them right up where they left off. And the same concept really with MRT, because it is a step program.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? So in summary, when do you see this kind of transitioning?
Not quickly enough.
So our current-
It's just the logistics of hiring people and... February 11th is when the BI contract expires.
Right.
We could be very realistically taking over the in custody portion before that, as far as running Courage to Change groups in the jail. And if that's the case, we end up having some savings because BI doesn't invoice us if they cut out on that part early. We have been very clear with BI and they've agreed that they will work right to February 11th when the contract expires, as far as the day reporting center portion with providing the MRT groups. So time is of the essence, because as you know, with recruitments and law enforcement backgrounds, there's no realistic way I'm going to have deputy probation officers hired and onboard by February 11th.
Right.
So I'm going to have to be covering that and asking my guys to do more than their fair share of work for a while. But I'm hopeful that it won't be too far past that. I mean, it just kind of depends on what level of recruitment we have. I do have an excellent group of extra higher probation aides and some full-time probation aides, three of them who I'm training in Courage to Change to help support us through that transition. The MRT piece is actually going to be the more difficult piece. And that's because opening a clinician recruitment is not always easy from, you know, Mary's giving me nonverbals. So, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic.
I mean, I know you've got to hire and transition and all of that. So are you thinking six months?
Six months for what? Which part?
To be onboard 100% with the program.
I think that's a realistic timeframe, yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying to gauge some idea.
We will be, if the board agrees with us, we'll return to the board on the 9th, which changes to the position controllers to add the positions. And as soon as those are approved and hopefully, given the discussions today and if the board approves, do that as a consent item and then the recruitments can immediately be open. But of course, we're going into the Christmas holidays, so the chance of that will take a little bit longer.
On the bright side, we have a DPO1 recruitment open now. So in theory, we will have a list with people we can pull from. The clinician position, we don't have open as of, as of right now.
Well, I like the idea of kind of growing our own. I think it's, you know, you have a lot more success that way, I believe, as well as, you know, accountability. I know in the beginning, setting up and starting out, you have to go with something. And I think, you know, at that time, in that moment, that was the best thing to do. So I'm glad to see us kind of transition into doing something ourselves, because I think we'll have a lot better control and direction that we need to have with this program.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
It's nice to have, it's nice to see that you actually listened to what we said. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And responded.
Any public comments on this item?
This has been one of the rockiest roads that we've been on in a long time. It's been for quite a while. And I have to say that I am so optimistic and so thrilled that Mary Suwicky, David Sakman, our district attorney, and now Samuel Leach and Captain Ballard and Jim Vasito and the team that was there bumping along on this road for so long, stayed the course. And we are, in these meetings now, which I go to all of them, there is a respect and there is a dedicated desire to working together. And I think we're seeing that now. And I'm very excited about this. And when we went with BI before, it wasn't only just the best thing to do, it was the only thing we could have done at that time. So kudos to everyone who stayed the course and showed their professionalism and it's exciting. Thank you.
George Fry again, excuse me. That's a retired California Youth Authority parole agent. I get what Marty is saying. And you got a great chief probation officer. He's just right on. When I worked in the field in Bakersfield for four years, when kids would come out on parole, we had an intensive program for the first two weeks. And we put together a plan for them and they worked themselves off of it and we- a plan for them, and they worked themselves off of it, and we held groups, all kinds of groups, drug groups and alcohol groups and what have you. And I just think the program that he's doing, and the fact that we're bringing, we're going to hire people that are going to be working for the county, and I think they're going to have more of an investment in the county, I think it's just great. And I really applaud the chief probation officer for what he's doing. It's just been an amazing change.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back for the board for further discussion or possible action.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a great move. I'm happy to, happy to see it happening. It'll be interesting to see the numbers, you know, in a couple of years. Hopefully, we get above that twenty-seven. Somewhere around ninety-seven is, you know, what I'm shooting for, so.
Yeah, and I'm really jealous, because I carried a hundred and fifty young kids on my caseload, and when I hear forty-eight, that's, that's only one-third of what I carried.
So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion made by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Callaway, to approve the spending plan adjustment to replace BI Inc. with county-run day reporting center, approve a creation of four new positions using state realignment funds, approve budget transfers for probation and health and human services. This item will require a four-fifth vote by the board supervisors. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries four oh with one absent. Thank you. Let the, let the work begin. Okay, item number twenty-seven from the administrative office, approve the attach agreement for services between the County of Calaveras and Justice Systems Corporation for the installation of jail security cameras, an amount not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand four hundred and ten dollars. Good morning, Captain Ballard. Who's going to present this?
I think I will.
You present, and I'll follow up.
I will start, and if there's any questions I can't answer, Captain Ballard is here to help me out, since he is the expert in the area. Basically, as mentioned in the staff memo, when the plans were developed for the new jail and the sheriff's office, staff, project managers worked with the architectural firm to ensure that the cameras were going to cover all areas that were needed. As often happens when you're looking at something on paper, and the reality under construction, things change, and Captain Ballard realized that there were still blind spots in the jail, and asked Justice Systems to come into, back into the jail and do a survey to determine what the actual additional needs would be. At the same time, it was determined that there were cameras that were not included in the administration building, sorry, the sheriff's office building, in the records area for security on the inner lobby area, counters and windows, the doors from the live scan room, back into the records area, and the, where the records are stored, and exterior window. There were concerns expressed to me about some of those cameras in the sheriff's office, and as a result, I met with the sheriff on two occasions, and Captain Ballard on two occasions, to ensure that not only were the cameras being installed in the jail and areas that were needed, because those are the areas the inmates have discovered are blind spots, and they have issues with, but also to ensure that the placements in the records area were such that they were providing and monitoring the areas that were expected to be monitored. And when looking at the plans, I was, I was concerned, and speaking with Captain Ballard, there was discussions about adjusting the placement of those cameras so that they indeed provide for the security for the counter space and the lobby and the other areas I mentioned. There is funds available in the project. One piece of good news, last week, we received a check on the final payment of reimbursement of funds from the state of California to the two hundred and one point three million dollars. So, that's exciting. But this is an issue that has been pending for the jail and for the sheriff's office. Again, it's, they did their best estimate in when they originally did the plans for the jail and for the sheriff's office building, but there were areas in both buildings that were not covered. And for staff safety, for inmate safety, for monitoring of inmates, we're recommending to move forward. And Captain Ballard can answer any additional questions if I missed anything.
Oh, you've covered it.
Sounds good to me.
So, I have a question on some of this. So, these additional cameras will go out, and then they'll be monitored in a central station, like, like the others are now?
Yes, they will. They'll tie into the current security electronic system. And within the jail, we have two, or actually, one, two, three, four, five areas to monitor the inmates within, within the facility. So, it'll, it'll, it'll just incorporate and enhance that current system that we have right now.
Is this monitoring twenty-four seven?
We do the best we can at monitoring them twenty-four seven. You know, main control is manned twenty-four hours a day. There is a hundred and sixty cameras right now. So, we, we monitor it, but I can't tell you, we see everything.
Okay.
But, you know, I just take a minute and kind of enhance what Shirley was saying. You know, these blind spots that were identified early, early on proved to be a big problem for us once we did the op, opened, did the operation, all of our contraband use, hiding, fights, all that stuff. And, you know, we had one inmate knocked out for several minutes, and we had no idea because we didn't, we didn't know he was there. So, it is mission critical.
Are the monitors only in the jail?
There are monitoring systems with, in between the investigations and narcotics units, and then one monitoring station within the sheriff's office itself.
And where's that?
What's that?
Where's the monitor in the sheriff's office?
At his desk. And I currently have one at my desk, and my jail commander has one at his desk.
Captain Ballard, I thought that when you walk into the administrative office, there was a camera there on people that go in and out of the administrative office. Is this saying there is not one there, and you're going to foot one there?
Well, when, when I did the design and worked with the engineers, there was basically three reasons where we were going to place the cameras. Security for the building entrances and exits, or exits of all, and all areas where the public would be, areas of high potential liability and preservation of the chain of evidence, and areas occupied by inmates. When you do walk into the sheriff's office, I, I got the front lobby, first outer lobby covered real well, I got the inner lobby covered real well, but from the backside looking out, and the records area, it's not covered.
So, the records area, it's those rolling things where all those files are?
Yes.
And why is one needed in there?
To meet that criteria for potential liability. You know, those are public records, and, and in the event somebody did get in there and get into the records, you know, we need to, we need to preserve them.
Well, I mean, I'm going to just cut to the chase and not fiddle around, but I know the employees are concerned about the use of cameras in the administrative office, and how they're used, and that if we approve this, are the cameras going to be repositioned? And I just feel like, you know, for, I don't know, the ease of the employees that are working there, I mean, has this been discussed with them, and do they know where they're going, the cameras are going to go, and how they're going to be utilized, and if they're going to be tweaked once they're in, so that it becomes something different than what is being proposed?
All right. I follow my instruction, Marita, in making sure that the areas that I was specifically directed that are covered will be covered. When I'm done with the facilitation of doing this, that's what will be covered.
So, along those lines, how are employees, are they, is it part of the, do employees know that they're being on camera and monitored and, and recorded?
There's cameras in the upper lobby, over the front desk that pans over that employee's desk, out to the upper lobby, and the elevator's coming up. There's currently cameras in the evidence area for the counter, for the exchange of evidence, so the employees know that they are monitored, or that area is monitored. I shouldn't say the employees are monitored, but the evidence area is monitored. And what was missing was the records area. And it was because of concerns that were brought to me, that I had lengthy discussions with both Captain Ballard and Sheriff Kuntz about where the cameras were going to be placed, what angle they were going to be at. And I was assured by, both by the sheriff and by Captain Ballard, that the intent was to have one camera out towards the front glass area and counters, because, and I'm not an expert, but mind you, because the cameras on the inner lobby was focused on the inner lobby. So, if somebody came across that and into the records area, there was no way to see what was happening or going on, or how critical the incident was in that area. There was also the door from the inner lobby that went into where the live scan equipment is, and once they're in that room, there's additionally a door from there then into the records area. So, the other camera was to cover that doorway to make sure there was no access by unwanted persons coming in there, the rear windows that faced, was part of the exterior of the building and record storage area.
Yeah. And, you know, to add to that, everybody that enters that building is on camera. You know, I mean, that's, that's, that's the way it's set up. You know, I'm the one that did the initial adjustment and placement of the cameras prior to anybody occupying them. There's two places where, you know, it's, looks like it's directly on staff now, but I'm going to adjust those to come up so that, you know, it's not directly on staff.
And additionally, the plans that I was initially looking at and was concerned about, I, I spoke with the sheriff and Captain Ballard, and they agreed of moving the location of one of those cameras to better angle towards the front windows and the other camera to cover the distance. So, there, there is adjustments to the original plans, because it was my understanding, we're talking with Captain Ballard and the sheriff, that the plans that I had received were not what they had discussed with the contractor.
They were not.
So, when do you expect for the installation of these cameras and everything to be online?
To the best, let's see, I think if we get this approved today, they'll be starting within the next couple of weeks. And I would hope that, you know, it's a different scenario now. I mean, we're occupied, I'll, you know, I have to work around inmates and do all that, but, you know, I'm hoping to be done, you know, within thirty days.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from the board? Any public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for...
Thank you.
Further, thank you, further discussion or make a motion?
So, move? A second.
There's been a motion moved by Supervisor Edson, second by Supervisor Wright, to approve the attach agreement for services between the County of Calaveras and Justice Systems Corporation for the installation of jail security cameras, an amount not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand four hundred and ten dollars.
Before you call for the question, can I ask? Ms. Ryan, has the union notified of what was happening? And did they have any?
We did receive a letter expressing the concerns about the cameras in the rec, in the sheriff's administration building, and hopefully, by meeting with Captain Ballard and the sheriff, and following up to ensure that the installation of those cameras are for the benefit of public safety and, and the safety of the records, hopefully, we'll alleviate any of those concerns that were expressed.
Okay, thank you. Call for the question.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I do. Motion carries three one with one absent. Okay, item number twenty-eight from the sheriff's office. We have several items here. Item number one, accept in the two thousand fourteen COPS Hiring Grant Award from the United States Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. Item number two, approve a draw on contingencies from the general fund in the amount of twenty-eight thousand one seventy-five for the sheriff's office fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen patrol general fund unit for financing of the county sheriff cost under the two thousand fourteen COPS Hiring Grant, requiring a four-fifth vote. Item three, approve offsetting adjustments to revenues and expenditures in the amount of eighty-four thousand five hundred and ten dollars to the sheriff's office fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen patrol general fund unit for the receipt and expenditures of the federal government's sheriff cost under the two thousand fourteen COPS Hiring Grant. All right. I see no one here from the sheriff's department on this item, so I'll defer to administration on this item.
The two thousand fourteen COPS Hiring Grant was applied for, it's not the first time that the COPS Hiring Grant has been applied for, at least I believe, it has been applied for prior years without a, this is the first time the county was actually awarded the grant. The grant is for three school resource officers, and the requirements under the grant, well, the sheriff is here, maybe he would like to...
Sheriff Kuntz, would you like to give an overview of this grant program? We have...
This is the grant program. Let me get a look at it. I'm sure he's on his way.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's okay. I'll let Shirley continue.
Under, under the proposed grant, it provides for three school resource officers, and the grant is for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Under the grant, it will help fund three school resource offices for the first three years of the grant, and for the fourth year, the county has to commit to fund those offices for twelve months. The awarding of the grant of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars comes with a county, as mentioned in the award documents, comes with county sheriff cost of a little over a half a million dollars. However, based on the sheriff's offices report, the actual cost for those officers over that time period is actually a little over eight hundred thousand dollars. So, basically, what the county will be committing to is eight hundred thousand dollars over the next four years in county general funds to receive three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the COPS Hiring Grant.
Okay. Good morning, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I'm on item twenty-seven here, providing an overview. So, Shirley basically read from the admin report here. So, do you want to give a little background on this and...
Sure. This is the two thousand fourteen COPS Hiring Grant. There are kind of a list of positive aspects regarding this grant that I'll go over. There's a list of negative aspects about this grant that I will go over. Did, did she discuss the fact that it's broken into multiple parts where you'll, the approval will have to, to be made as such?
Right, as stated on the agenda here?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So, to discuss a list of positives about this grant, this is a very competitive nationwide grant. We've applied for it for several years. The sheriff's office did have this grant back in the late nineteen nineties, and we utilized it for school resource officers at that time. There was still a match at that time, however, the match was slightly different than it is today. I think the grant has become a little more complex than it was in the late nineteen nineties. The grant is for a total of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That grant includes three school resource officers, one of which, not necessarily the officer, but the hire must be a military veteran. What will occur with this, with this grant is one school resource officer will be placed into the Calaveras Unified School District side. That deputy sheriff will respond to calls for service, conduct investigations, and will assist students and staff with the day-to-day activities relating to events and issues that come up with the school. He or she will also provide some counseling services, not clinical counseling services, but preventative counseling services, education, conflict resolution type, type things. The second deputy sheriff will work... The second deputy sheriff will work the Mark Twain, Valacito, and Bret Hart side, the Highway Four corridor. That deputy will provide those same services to those schools that I just mentioned the previous deputy would do. The third deputy will provide a little more specific detailed training. Specifically, that deputy's going to train students and staff in the event that there's an active shooter or some other issue such as a suspicious device. That same deputy will also train the bus drivers throughout the county. That deputy will work with the school's maintenance staff and the board to try and strengthen some of the security measures at the school sites specifically. And finally, that deputy will, when, when training and, and working with the school maintenance staff on the, on the security aspect of things, we need to get everybody kind of trained into some contemporary safety and security measures relating to what's happened recently in the schools. As I think all of you know, there's been several shootings throughout the country, and the methodology behind how to safely secure those schools has changed as a result of some of those shootings. I think some of, some of the previous methodology related to sheltering in place for the students, and unfortunately, after one specific shooting, that changed quite a bit because one school suffered some mass casualties as a result of that, that older methodology or thought process. So this third deputy is going to be trained in how to basically train students and staff and bus drivers on how to respond to these incidents involving a little more contemporary methods than what they had previously been trained on. That, that third deputy is also going to be, have a flexible schedule and shift so that they can work after-school activities such as sporting events, music events, and other functions such as the School Attendance Review Board. There is a truancy issue in the county, and part of that truancy issue relates to students themselves who refuse to go to school, and the other half of that is parents who refuse to send their kids to school. So this third deputy will be able to respond to homes during days when that student is not at school. They'll also be able to respond to, to track down parents who are currently wanted by the court system for violations of the education code, and will hopefully help improve that process and working with, with the schools to get the students back in school and the parents in line with, with the education code. The negatives about this grant, obviously, it requires some action to be taken today, and one of those of which is that it will require you to remove $28,000 from contingencies to fund this year's portion of the grant. If you refer to page three, and again, it's page three on paper, I'm not sure what it's going to be on your iPad, but the grant amount per year was broken down by year. That should be pretty straightforward and clear. Please let me know if you have questions. But I, I see that being somewhat of a, a negative, is you having to pull money out of contingencies this year to fund the remainder of that. In future years, the Board of Supervisors is going to have to fund increasing amounts toward this grant. Those amounts, I would assume, will likely be requested or taken from the general fund. And then the final year, the general fund bears the entire cost of the grant. To step back a moment, the, the school resource officer, COPS Hiring Grant, funds a portion of these officers for the first three years, and then they require that the county maintain the grant for the remainder to, the remainder, excuse me, two additional years for a total of five. And obviously, the amount borne by the county is considerable in 2000, it's considerable across the board, but specifically when you start talking about 2017 and 18, and it does reduce in the last year, but it's also significantly high in 2016 and 17. A couple of statistics that I just want to close with, that I think may be beneficial to all of you. In 2010, the sheriff's office had about 800 calls countywide relating to the schools, calls for service. Outside of the sheriff's office, other agencies fire an ambulance, and this could include the police department. There was an additional 592 calls. 2013, we had 955 calls relating to the schools, calls for service, and in 2013, the other agencies in addition had another 459 calls. So far, as of November 24th of this, this year, we've had 667 calls for service relating to, to schools. I think with that, I hope that didn't go over this too fast and miss anything, but with that, I'll take some questions, and the sheriff is here also, if you have any specific questions for him.
So what do you see the overall cost? Shirley had mentioned about $800,000 over a three-year period?
Four-year period.
Four-year period?
And, and I'm talking the, the three years of the grant and the 12 months that we, the county has to maintain those positions past the grant. Now, it spans more than four budget years, but over the cost of the, of the four years of the grant spread between the budget years, the total cost for the three positions is 375,000 of that would be the federal share under the grant, and 802,805 would be the county cost during those four years, spread over budget years. I, I caution the board only because of the deficit situation that we've been in. We closed that gap for the current fiscal year, but we still use 4.8 million in one-time funding to balance the current year's budget. And, and we know, we've talked about ongoing costs forward with next fiscal year, the full year, the 4% COLA, increasing PERS costs, and just to remind you that, that the estimates for the cost of the resource officers have been built in the step increases as they move through the ranks over the years. So those costs are included in the 802,000, but they, I believe that when the budget analyst for the sheriff's office did the PERS rates, it's at the current PERS rates, and we, we know that those may go up, maybe a little bit more. So as we move forward, if revenues don't keep pace or increase enough to cover our increase in expenditures, you're now asking over the next four, five years to increase the general fund contribution to the sheriff's office by a total of $800,000. And like I said, I, I just want to caution the board that we're still balancing the budget with 4.8 million in one-time cost this year.
Shirley, what's the, the 1.3 million, is that what it was? Check for the jail, is that just for the jails?
That's to reimburse the capital improvement projects, that money we've already spent. Our capital project improvement budget fund is in a negative situation. This will bring it back to a positive situation and reimburse for costs that were already spent for the construction of the jail.
How did we, how do we have that built, how did we have that built into the budget with, I mean, if we didn't get that 1.3 million, I'm sure you had a, a plan there.
We, we had a plan. We were hoping we wouldn't have to use it, but again, these were separate funds. These are capital project funds. We, we knew under AV900 that the state had allotted a certain amount for the, the construction of the jail with the county match, and it was paid up until the point where they held back a 5%, I believe it was a 5% retention. And, and they held that until the jail was completed, and we met all the requirements, and everything was, they got all the reports they needed, and now they have released those funds back to us. So that was deposited last week, our capital project fund back into a positive balance. And, and so those are not funds available for...
No, but it does mean that that's money that we're not going to have to expend from other sources to backfill if we hadn't gotten it.
We, we had never expected to try and backfill that from other sources. If we did, the first place we would have looked were the certificates of participation money, which again, is only can be used for capital projects.
And so you're talking $200,000 on average?
A year.
A year for the next four years?
It, it's actually broken down...
If you break it, check, you not have it?
No idea.
Supervisor Wright?
Twenty-eight thousand for the first year and then...
137, 191,263,000 and 181.
So there's a certain risk-reward kind of thing you have to look at then, as far as, you know, because it's not a huge amount of money when you look at it, and it is a grant that, you know, and it does fulfill a unique position in the community. The one question I did have, is this position available to help out with like meth awareness education, other drug education projects?
Yes. We currently, though, our, our narcotics unit has a grant application that we submitted yesterday that heavily emphasizes that. But yes, these, this deputy, these uniform deputies are going to be at the school, they're going to be participating in a lot of educational stuff, both one-on-one, behind closed doors, and, you know, in a more kind of group setting such as rallies and things of that nature.
And what if we, what if we, we vote for, to approve it today, and then we decide to back out, that do we have to repay that money?
Yes, we would most definitely have to repay that money. Additionally, a couple of things to consider. Well, I, I don't disagree with the need for school resource officers because the sheriff's office certainly knows better than I do. My main concern is that you're talking about dedicating over $800,000 over a four-year period to receive $375,000. And we don't know what the cost for training and the equipment, because those are not included in the grant, if I'm correct. The other thing I did notice when I was reading the information on the grant, that counties could have required, requested a waiver of the county match, and I did not see anything in the grant application whether our, the sheriff's office had requested that waiver. And I believe once the grant is issued, it, it becomes too late to request that waiver. Again, it's, you're, you're talking, I'm not even really disputing the need for school resource officers. I'm only concerned because if revenues do not keep pace with expenditures, we're going to continue to have to fund with one-time dollars, which will eventually disappear, and you're adding additional costs to that. And if we have to make cuts, then you're, you're looking at other departments to take those hits to fund these positions.
With respect to your question, Supervisor Wright, on defaulting on the grant, for lack of a better term, I wondered that same question, and during the height of the recession, I know at least one agency that had the grant and defaulted on it. I just didn't call them and say, hey, what happened to you guys when you defaulted on the grant, because I really didn't want to stick my nose into their business.
Right.
But I wondered that because this, there were several agencies that had this grant during the height of the recession, and they, they had to, but what happened to them, I don't know. I have not heard about anybody having to repay that. I think at the very minimum, it may, you may not be looked upon favorably should you try to apply for any other grants, you know, later.
We mentioned school resource officer. Was there any, I don't know if you want to call it networking or outreach to the various school districts and participation of this? Was there any kind of memorandum of understanding of how they might participate? Are they, are they in a position to pay their share?
To answer the first part of that question, we did reach out and discuss this with them. There are some MOUs that will come back before the board at the direction of county council and the CAO's office. They wanted this brought to you in two separate parts so that they didn't go through the labor and work of approving the MOUs if the grant wasn't going to be approved. So those will be coming back before you, and I have had discussions, obviously some calls came up, one of which came from Bret Hart, because their campuses are located within the city and they're currently receiving services from the city. So, and I, I'm on the School Attendance Review Board, so I did have some discussions. I also called some principals and other staff members about this. When it comes to asking for funds, I did not ask Calaveras Unified for any funding because their financial situation's been very aware publicly. And I did not ask for any of the other schools to match any of the funding. That certainly could be asked in the future, but from what I'm being told, the schools aren't in very good financial shape anyway. The grant opportunity allowed for us to receive federal dollars, albeit there is a significant match to provide those services, so we aggressively went after the grant.
So, so your contact was with like Mark Twain Unified and Valacito Unified and...
Initially, I went through the superintendent of schools, and then I spoke to individual members. I got calls from several folks, and you'll have to forgive me, but at the time, we had another grant application that required significant MOUs, so I had to have some office staff help me keep these separate, but I did have some communication with several of, several if not all of the schools. And then I received a couple of calls from some other schools that aren't listed on here requesting similar services and training.
So was this grant, application for this grant, was this specific to just school resource officers? Was there consideration for other, it looked like there was other avenues in here?
There, there was, and we looked at, and I, I don't recall what they all were, but we looked at what we would be the most competitive in going after and what would be most beneficial to the community. There was some gang reduction opportunities there, I believe, and there may have been another one. And again, I could be confusing this with another grant application regarding open-air drug markets. And looking at the opportunities we had and the need in the county, this one not only fit our needs the most, but we, we believed it was the strongest application we could put forward. Our, our gang stats don't really compare to Detroit's, but when you look at school resource officers and the shootings that are going on around the country, not a lot of those are happening in major metropolitan areas. They're kind of happening in unfortunately areas that are outlined. And as some of you recall, you know, we just came off of an incident at Calaveras High where a student had an automatic weapon in the school bus. So kind of looking at the dynamic, this, this was the, the, the option out of the grant process that fit us the best.
That actually was lucky situation right there.
So tell me about what this officer, since there's three school resource officers, what happens when there's no school during their breaks and things like that? What happens to the officer?
So the officers will have the county holidays off, but the school holidays, they will continue to work. When we had this grant previously, that's when they could work with maintenance, because maintenance isn't always off, that's when they can plan their presentations. I believe we can utilize them for some other services, but it has to be closely related to, to the schools. So we will keep them, we will keep them busy, but as far as specific tasks day by day, we're going to have to see how their workload is and what they're able to accomplish during the school year and what they're not. That's also time when they would obviously attend any training, and hopefully they would take their vacations. We can't control necessarily when they take their vacations, but hopefully it would kind of fall in line somewhat with school breaks.
Would they respond to emergencies, like, you know, outside of the school but in the community?
You know, absolutely, absolutely, and that, that question does come up, and that's kind of the difficult part of grants and some of our contracts. The bottom line is if we have a major emergency and a deputy's out in the field assigned to a grant or contract, it makes no sense to keep them there and not service somebody, so they absolutely will, and we have to often work out paperwork after the fact and bill backs and charge backs, and that creates a lot of, a lot of headaches, but that is the reality of, of the system we're in.
So if I understand, then we're looking about a four-year commitment, and it's the grant, it's...
It's four years, three years for life of the grant, the 12 remaining months, but it's across five fiscal budget years.
Yeah, I, I'm almost looking at it as five, to be honest with you. And can I just add one other note too, so the board understands how this came about and the way it... This grant was, we were noticed on this grant on or about September 30th of this year. The funding amount started in September 1st. So this grant is already somewhat in play 30 days before we're ever notified. It obviously takes a considerable amount of time to get this before you today. In order for us to sort of try and make this work, we're going to actually have to start hiring people by January 1st, which puts a lot of strain on human resources in our own department, because it's very difficult to hire deputies in that short a timeframe. So there's been a lot of push to get this before you prior to today, but there was a lot of, a lot of hoops to jump through. So I would hope the board can kind of understand why there's such a rush and why we haven't had more time to lay, to lay this out and have more discussion.
But this was applied for in June?
What's that?
This was applied for in June?
It was, but the notice of intent to award, just, you know, I really wish the system was better. I'd rather not be noticed 30 days after the funding cycle started. It would nice, be nice to have some advance notice, but it's out of our control.
So a five-year commitment, basically. $375,000 is the award of the grant, and our county match is at least $800,000, which covers for labor and related labor expenses? There's no, nothing in here that covers material, training, any equipment, car, anything along those lines?
Sure. And it, what, what, I'm sorry.
So do you think that we have the means then to cover the... So do you think that we have the means then to cover those kinds of things? Or are we looking at an additional expense to add to help support their efforts in the school?
There will absolutely be additional expenses, but whenever possible, we'll utilize existing equipment. We do have spare equipment that we, we will utilize. And with respect to the cars, we will, we will lay all that out and look at what we have available at the time. I don't anticipate having to come back and ask the board for large ticket items such as a vehicle. But at the same time, you know, stuff like bulletproof vests, those are, you know, if we have some spares that happen to fit the person we hire, then we obviously will try and offset that cost, but there, there's going to be some expenses. Unfortunately, training wasn't involved in the grant, and we really do want to send them to school because that's where they're going to get, you know, the, the modern and up-to-date training they need. So there, there are going to be some additional expenses.
All right, any other thoughts or comments from board?
Sure. So I just wanted everybody to know that I asked about this before June. And, and what I was asking for is that admin, the school system, probation and sheriff's department maybe pull together to find a way to fund a couple of resource officers so it wouldn't be such an expense or end behavior. And of course, that didn't ever happen, I didn't even get any response off of it. So I guess you can look at this a couple of different ways. One, yeah, it's going to cost some money, but how much do you want to invest in your future, really? So we have kids out there right now, and I took a health walk with a bunch of them from the elementary school. And out of those fifty kids that I was walking with, I identified twelve immediately that looked to me like they were going to be in our system within the next five years or so, or next ten years. How much is that going to cost? I know that's expensive to, and, and in continuing use of resources over time. We're not doing anything right now to prevent that, or break that, that chain of events from happening. It's just getting worse and worse and worse as we go along. We can't rely on the parents in many cases to be able to solve some of these problems because most, some of those parents are in the system. And so what we're doing is we're recreating a problem, only it's doubling in size in many cases. I would say that, you know, on the downtime from schools and stuff, resource officers could also go into the neighborhoods and shake hands and maybe prevent some of these, these crimes that are happening. Like for instance, in the back where I live, right next to Turner Park. And I know the sheriff's department has been spending a lot of time over there, but there's a ton of kids over there recently, and they were, they were doing some pretty unsavory things. So they've taken some of our, in the past, they've taken some of our assets like parks and things like that, and they made them not very comfy for regular folks to go down there and spend time down there and, and have family time. Some of the folks that I've talked to wouldn't go down there two months ago. So the sheriff had to go in there and clean house, but it's going to come back because we don't have the, we don't have the preventive maintenance that it takes to be able to curb some of this activity. So you have a full-time staff right now?
A full-time staff at the school or not?
At, at your?
No, no, we're, all of our positions are not currently full.
So, and how long's that been going on?
Couple of years.
Okay. So, so there are, could there be some cost savings there on a continuous basis?
As far as salary savings for the existing positions, no, I would not want to defer filling those existing positions because, am I misunderstanding you?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I mean, you said for the past two years, you haven't been able to keep it full.
That's correct.
So we already have a running?
There have been salary savings, yes.
So is there any possibility of saving on overtime?
I don't believe our current overtime allotment for the year is, is or was realistic. I know in the jail, we've already exceeded it significantly. As of last week, we were holding the line on patrol, meaning we're about where we're supposed to be. However, I don't have a lot of confidence that that's going to continue throughout the remainder of this next fiscal year. I think we're going to exceed, if you recall during the budget Supervisor Edson, our, our overtime allotment was cut, I'm going to guess about a hundred thousand dollars. I shouldn't say guess, but as, as far as I recall, it was cut significantly. So, you know, I wish we could find some money within our own agency to help fund this, but that's just not the reality right now. And I, I don't want to interrupt you, but I also wish this grant didn't have the match. If it were up to me, it wouldn't have a match, this would be a lot easier decision on you. It certainly would have been a lot easier decision or approval process for us and a lot less work, but.
And so the one thing that I have experienced throughout the county, and I've talked to a tremendous amount of people about this, is labor pool. We have in the county right now, a labor pool that is, that is very hard to find actually. And one of the reasons is, is because probably seven out of ten folks that apply for a job can't keep the drug test, they can't pass the drug test. So we have quite a?
So you're asking to waive the drug?
Well, I'm not asking to waive the drug test, honey. So, so all I'm saying is, is we are continuing, how can we ever improve if we don't do some kind of prevention to, to make improvements in the future? And, and that doesn't come free at all. So it's, I guess it's just a, you know, a decision on, on how much it costs, how much do we want to invest in our, in our future, at least for the next five years for this? So, that's my comment.
Can I say something?
You know, I don't particularly care for grants myself. I don't because there's always a hitch to them. But we're to the point now that if we don't do something, we're going to lose everything we have up there. And when I look back at this grant for school, school resource officers, number one, it's school safety, number two, just having those cops in the school all the time, the, the drug is coming out of school, we're going to drop significantly. And when the kids are out of school, these officers can fall into some of the trouble kids are in school because they're the ones that go out during the day when their parents are working ripoff houses and everything else. So, and we've been very, very fortunate in this county that we never had a large incident happen where somebody got killed on the school grounds. But if it ever happens, it's going to be really horrible. And so I don't know where to go anymore. Like I said, we keep losing people every year, positions every year. Where do we go next? Next thing you do, what, shut the sheriff's department down? Save eight million dollars? What's going to happen, you know? So unfortunately, times are hard, but I really feel that we can't afford not to have this grant. And they have the stakes in our schools and our kids and everything else. And as far as kids coming to school loaded up on drugs and everything else, these officers are trained for that, they can see it. I know particularly one officer that was a school resource officer, and he's a corporal now, and the kids to this day, it's been six years now, know him by name and everything else, and highly respect him, will tell him things and everything else. So I think it's a big, very big deterrent just on the drug aspect of it, let alone whatever else. Thank you.
So does the City of Angels have a school resource officer?
I'm sorry?
Does the City of Angels have a resource officer?
Go ahead. They did. I believe they had almost like a local grant. And when I talked to the chief, it, it has expired and they no longer have it. They still have an officer that responds to the school when available like we do.
I got a question for you on the deadline for this, the decision?
Yes.
When do we have to make that decision?
I know we are getting close to the deadline and I, Brandon Cody is not here today, so let me see if I can find that in my, my notes here. Supervisor Wright, I'm going to think I'm going to have to get back to you, I want to say December or January, but I think I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I don't see it in the paperwork I have here before me. I know we were getting close to a deadline, but I had a deadline yesterday and at this point I'm?
Do you know, true?
I'm looking at?
I can make a quick phone call and probably find out.
It seems to.
Can I, I have?
At some point I thought it was December 31st, but I could be around here.
Good, are you going to make a phone call?
I'll have somebody else make it for me so I can answer your question.
Um, you know, I just heard, you know, about the need for this and the funding and the struggles that we're having both from the admin office and from you. So in the grant application, I guess, I'm trying to understand when we had the opportunity to say about waiving our local match and we said no.
Well, I agree with that.
So why, why did we answer no and not yes?
I think it was because of the competitiveness of the grant. As I mentioned to start, we've applied for this every single year since I think we, we had it in 1990 and it was no, no, no. And we wanted to remain as competitive as we possibly could.
December 22nd or later, 26th of the second.
So that was why we chose, that was part of the discussion as far as why we chose not to.
When's the deadline?
December 22nd or December 26th?
We've December 22nd, but no later 26th.
Supervisor Ponte, there may have been more of a discussion about why we chose not to, but I don't, I don't recall.
I just, you know, I guess my whole thing is, you know, I'm all for having some representation of law enforcement in the schools and in assisting in that endeavor. I, at, at what we've went through for the last several years on the budget, to take a look at a commitment of a grant of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, what we know to be cost of eight hundred plus some monies because that officer is going to need training, equipment, supplies, probably a car, et cetera. So I'm looking at upwards of at least a million. And I just have a really hard time looking at that kind of money in a million dollars over a four, five-year budget year process. And then, you know, when I look at the grant application, you know, I, I just have questions, but when I got to the fact of a waiver of a local match and we said no, competitive or not? I mean, I don't know if we can afford a million plus over the next four or five years. I mean, I, I just have a hard time money-wise when we've slashed so much of county government and, and then taking a look at making this shift and supplementing this. And I, I just, I'm having a hard time with that.
I don't blame you.
So.
I, I did look conversely at what it would cost if you wanted to fund it through the general fund, and it looked like for this three school resource officers, it would be approximately two hundred and sixty-seven thousand the first year, and for a total of the three years, eight hundred and one thousand. That wouldn't require you to jump through any of the grant hoop commitments that, that are currently in there with respect to reporting and funding. So should you choose that, or you want to know what the alternative costs were to funding it out of the general fund? The first year for three school resource officers was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and for the, for the three years without the two-year commitment, it's eight hundred and one thousand. And again, that's approximate.
Any other comments or questions from the board before I open up for public comment?
I agree with Supervisor Ponte. I know when Rick DiVincilio was our school resource officer, it was wonderful. I mean, the kids loved him. I mean, they, I don't know if that was the one you were talking about, but yeah, they still talk about Rick. He had that magic touch. They, he dealt with drugs, sexual aggression, anger issues, child abuse, homelessness, because he was on, on the multitude, he was one officer and he did multiple campuses if I remember correctly. And as much as I support, I support the concept of this, I think if the board wants to do it, they need to fund it out of general fund, whether it's one, two, or three officers at budget time. But to spend over eight hundred thousand dollars for a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant, I have a hard time committing to something like that. And so, I mean, the board's going to spend the money anyway. If, if this is approved, so why not do it as Captain Macedo said in just general fund? Fund it when it comes time to setting your budget priorities.
Any other comments from the board? All right, thank you. I'm going to open up to public comments.
Good afternoon Supervisors, NACALA, Tax Care Association. We really agree, this is a good thing, reaching out to the kids. Also, I'm a little bit in the dark, do we have a police athletic league or anything like that where there's voluntary communication between officers and the, and at least the high school kids? Because this can, can, can dovetail with something like that. I agree with, with Marita. It would be better if it were in-house, even though you wouldn't have as many people, and it would be long-term. Where the way it's operating under the grants, the grant's going to disappear and appear at a time. Then you have, you have the people that you've already hired that, that may not, you may not be able to keep. But with maybe less personnel, hopefully you would have a high, a high level of efficiency and, and long-term commitment with the, with the personnel that are involved. So we think that the, the county would, should put this into the general fund, have total control of it, and, and the learning curve of what to do, they may already know. And so it, it's not like we need to take this money to figure out how to reach out to kids, we may already know that. So we recommend that you go with the suggestion of Marita. Thank you.
And where the money's going to come from, folks, that's where you make the big money. But I want to bring something to your attention that's coming down the tube. And this proposal eventually come, going to come pretty handy. You know all those bad felons that are in jail right now? In a couple of months, they're going to be out because it's going to be less than a misdemeanor. You think the people change or just the classification of their, their felony? They're coming down in your neighborhood, and all of a sudden, they are saints. They're changing the classification from felony to misdemeanors, and they're going to be let out. There's already a number of inmates, I don't know how many of them, but applied to be released early on a basis of their original conviction. They might be on a real slimeballs in between, but because they got convicted on something that's going to be considered a misdemeanor, they're coming to our neighborhood. Now, I, I support the idea of getting to those kids. I'm all for it. But if you got a couple of extra cops on the street, you're going to need them pretty soon because we're going to have a lot of ex-occupants of the jail, they're going to be out in the street, free and clear. Do you think they changed? I would love to see more cops on the street. And if they can help the kids on the school, I'm all for it. But they might come handy, and that's coming down in the next couple of months. Soon as the, you know, the judges approve it, all those felony accounts are going to be misdemeanors and they're going to be free to walk. And they're going to be in a neighborhood, but no job, no education, the only education they're going to get is what they're getting in jail. And they're going to be also around the kids. So find the money. I mean, I'm off, I'm, I'm against grants and you guys know it, okay? But the first thing is make this county safe, and I'm all for educating the kids. But all those farmers in the national forest, they're going to be released, and they're not necessarily going to be staying up in the forest to farm.
Twenty seconds.
Thank you. So find a way, please. So find a way, please. Thank you.
Additional public comments?
Just a couple of questions that I had, just for, as a parent of a child who goes to Bret Hart. The Board pocket didn't include Bret Hart or Mark Twain, but included Vallesito High School. And Vallesito High School is now on Bret Hart campus, and it's been that way for the last two, three years. So I just wasn't, I was curious about how that works jurisdictionally, if those schools are basically off limits, if this were to go through. And then also with regards to whether you, if you grant fund it, there is a lot of reporting requirements that are required, as with any grant. So it would be my recommendation to ensure that we can easily obtain that reporting mechanism for a single audit requirements and ongoing grant management, that we would use a separate budget unit, not co-mingle it with patrol activities. That would also protect the patrol budget because under the terms of the grant, if the board does agree to the terms of the grant, you do agree to funding any additional extraneous costs with regards to that grant. If we were to co-mingle this grant in the patrol unit, we could be in violation of the terms of the grant because you may inadvertently be requesting the sheriff to cut his budget in order to offset those additional costs of the grant program, and you can't do that. So if you agree to the grant, you agree to the grant. So I would suggest a separate budget unit, which is similar to what we've done with a lot of the grant funds in the Sheriff's Department as well, to help deal with that. I also, in looking at the grant application, it looked like there was the potential to use narcotics or the asset seizure money that we have. And I know that the board earlier, the sheriff, I believe, also approved utilizing kind of that more extended asset seizure program. And so hopefully, there will be additional revenue coming in there. But I would just be curious, you know, if the possibility of taking some of the blow off the general fund would be looking at utilizing anything from AB443, the Friends of the Sheriff, the asset seizure money, if there were potential to use other grant funds as a match, for instance, because this, the SROs would actually be going to elementary schools as well. So maybe coordinating with First Five or Health and Human Services to look at some other grant opportunities. Sometimes we do use other grants to be used as the match component. And then I would just be curious if it's possible to open the dialogue with the schools, if they could fund any portion of the match, anything. I mean, even if they could just pay for the training. So I think it's important that they are getting a benefit that is on the tab of the general fund. So, you know, like Ms. Ryan, I'm not adverse to the concept. It's just I'm very fearful of the fact that we just have gone through and agonizing several years of trying to balance our budget, and we've done it on the heels of salary savings. I mean, and when we had this discussion at final budget, we had the exact same conversation was, we cannot guarantee the level of salary savings that we've been having. We can't guarantee that the Sheriff's Department is going to continue to be able to see salary savings from non-felony of deputy positions. They need those positions or corrections officers. So it's just something to bear in mind that I'm not really sure where we get this additional revenue from, because that's really what we're looking from. But I do know that we have some pretty significant costs countywide that are going to be hitting the county discretionary funds.
Thank you. Any additional public comments?
Kathy Gomes, City of Angels, and also an auditor employee. I have a son at the high school, and so I would like to ask the sheriff whether the city of police was actually asked if they could perhaps cover part of the cost of an officer. They did have a great school resource officer for the city, and as mentioned, they lost the funding for that, so the schools had to also lose their resource officer. My concern is, will there be a school resource officer within, from this grant, within the City of Angels? Because if there isn't, then I don't want my general fund dollars to not benefit my child. I just don't think that that would be right.
Well, you know, I'm all for a school resource officer, but I think general fund dollars should be for the interior county.
Thank you. I heard, if I heard right, there's a resource officer who would be assigned to Bret Hart.
Yeah, forgive me for, apparently I didn't make it clear, and I'll try to clarify. The City of Angels Camp provides services to the three schools that are within the City of Angels Camp. They did it as a school resource officer, and now that that is left, they continue to provide those services. They will continue to provide services related to in-progress, emergency calls for service, routine calls for service inside the City of Angels Camp. We are not going to step in and usurp their authority in their jurisdiction. However, Bret Hart Unified has school buses that leave the City of Angels Camp and go out into the county's jurisdiction. And in the event of a major incident, such as an active shooter inside the City of Angels Camp, due to the size of the police department, we would provide them assistance, just as they provide us assistance outside. So in order to make sure that everybody's training and activities or actions during an incident like this are seamless, we would want to provide those same training and preparation services so that they are clear and consistent countywide. It did not make any sense to exclude a couple of particular schools or locations within the county because of the way our emergency services process is set up in this county and the size of our respective jurisdictions.
So Jim, I'm wondering if maybe if you could go back, and I don't even know if this is feasible, but it's worth a shot anyway, since it seems like we're not going anywhere with this today, that you go back and ask the, ask if you can change the status to no match?
Okay.
And then bring it back to the board at a later date and see if you could also extend, possibly extend the application date to the first as well.
I will do...
I mean, to the first meeting in January.
I will try to do both.
Captain Macedo, to answer this Gomes question, when there is a school resource officer funded by Calaveras or Calaveras and a grant, it will not be a school resource officer for Mark Twain, Bret Hart, or Vallesito, correct?
Correct. The police chief wants to retain jurisdictional services for day-to-day activities there. However, the training for those and the discussions with maintenance about staff, and again, the major event training as well, all needs to be seamless. But the day-to-day business of handling calls for service and dealing with issues will be jurisdictional.
Correct. Okay, any other public comments on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for further information, review, direction, emotion.
You guys okay with that idea of having them check out, see if we can, I mean, because it seems like it would be a lot easier if the match went away. So maybe, you know, it's worth at least asking.
I, what I would look for is that the, there is no match, that there is an understanding with the school districts. You know, the MOU process, I guess you might say, and that the school districts are wanting to partner up with something like this. And include the City of Angels and CHP. You know, crime doesn't happen just under the Sheriff's Department. Crime happens with the City of Angels and CHP and US Forest Service and you name it. So I just, I'd like to see a little bit more cohesive...
But it sounds like they have done some of that work, though. It's just that they didn't want to bring that forward today because...
Well, if we have something in writing, then I would probably be a better believer.
Right, because it didn't, I mean, it wasn't that part of the discussion with county council, I mean, admin, that there's some MOUs out there?
There are MOUs. I believe County Council is working with the Sheriff's Office, but more or less put those on hold until...
Right.
With limited resources, you know, what I'm looking for.
But I'm just saying, it's not that there hasn't been any dialogue that's gone on, it just hasn't been finalized. So, I mean, it sounds like they are trying to reach out to the different entities. Because I would agree, I mean, there needs to be that agreement.
I can sense in my neck of the woods, well, if we had something in writing, I think that would be a lot better.
I do want to be clear, we have received several MOUs already. We'll be bringing that before the board, but there is no funding attached to those MOUs. It's operational, the MOUs are operational.
And there's no MOUs related to this grant, correct?
Yes, there is. The grant requires that we have an MOU with each of the respective schools. So that's why it's taken a considerable amount of time to circulate those MOUs out to their school, out to the schools. Some of them are required to get a signature from their council, some of them are allowed to get signatures in-house. Those have been trickling in, for lack of a better word, but because of the timing it took to get this before you and time to get it approved before the deadline, as I mentioned earlier, the county admin office and county council wanted us to bring these to you separately, bring the grant in first before they spent their time on the MOUs.
So you have MOUs circulating for Bret Hart Union High School District and Mark Twain Union School District and the City of Angels?
Yes. And some of them have started to come in. I don't...
I haven't seen it on their agendas, that's why I ask.
Yeah, I don't know. I had a phone conversation with Mike Schmenti a week ago.
Okay.
But the MOUs have been out to them for, I don't know, probably a better part of a month.
Can the Angels City Administrator or Sheriff's Department approve that MOU without a council action?
Not to my knowledge. All right. So do we want to ask the grant folks in through Captain Macedo about extending the grant and seeing if a match can be...
I think the key is the match, yeah.
All right, so we want to bring this back to a December 9th meeting?
Sure. But if it doesn't work out with the grant, I definitely would like to start some kind of a dialogue around finding community service officers for the schools. And I think that if we pull enough resources together, then we may be able to do that. Yeah, and I think, you know, adding the probation, you know, and other agencies. You've got all kinds of maybe funding opportunities out there that we're not looking at.
Okay, so we'll bring this back to December 9th. Okay? I've just been told CCTV needs a five, 10-minute recess to change out tapes. So we'll take a 10-minute recess.